Good evening and welcome to the Yorktown Town Board Work Session Meeting. It is February 25th. I ask everyone to please silence your cellphones and rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence remembering all of our first responders and our law enforcement officers. Especially, we remember the NYPD who lost two detectives to suicide over the last two weeks. We keep them and their families in our prayers. Thank you. As a reminder, this is a work session meeting. We have a packed agenda, some very interesting conversations. We're going to try to be as expeditious as we can with our time and we'll try to be on time. So we will begin with Ben Sidon. Where's Ben? We're going to have Ben come up as well as Scott. Please join us and our town planner, John Tegger. So Ben, I don't want to steal your fire, but just for some background for the board and for the public, I met Ben at Supervisor School. Still waiting for my degree. But from Supervisor School when I was from the Association of Towns. And we had a fantastic conversation about some of the services that Ben's group provides. Specifically, grants, which has been a topic of conversation from not just this town board, but previous town boards. And so I thought it was just something that I would want. I asked Ben to come and have a conversation with us and present to the board some, you know, a bit of a scope of what kind of work his firm does and present it to the board. If you don't mind.
Well, thank you Supervisor and thank you everyone from behind me. I apologize for having my back to everybody, but as a work session.
It's okay.
I think I caught my hair okay this time. So yes, Sir, thank you. We did meet at the Association of Towns newly elected town official. We've met many times before. You've come down to the Association of Towns and Town Clerk, Chris. You've come down and we met last week as well. But for those of you that have not met me or LaBerge Group, we are a full-service municipal consultant for engineering, planning, architecture, grant writing and government operations and efficiency. The area that we were talking about happens to be grant writing. Grant writing is one of our core disciplines. And I gave you all of our proposal highlighting our background in grants, what we do for municipalities and a process that we provide for annual, it's called a grant service agreement. As far as grants go, I'll bring it back just a little bit. We've been in business for over 55 years. I joined the firm back in 1999. So sorry, in 2000, I started tracking the services that we did and the grants that we won. And we've won $245 million since that time. It's been quite an amazing opportunity and our services have been utilized by communities as far north as Plattsburgh, as far south as Town of Brookhaven, the second largest town in the state, almost 496,000 people, the largest village in the state, which is the Village of Hempstead. They're one of our clients. As far west as the city Dunkirk. Now, for those who don't know what City Dunkirk is, is you go up a few hours to Albany, hang a left, go out about four hours to Buffalo, hang a left.
Oh my God.
Go another hour and then you hit Dunkirk.
Yep.
We're Canada.
So Dunkirk is pretty much Ohio. So that's how far, that's how we cover most of the state. With me is Scott Segal. Scott is our Community Development Manager. His team has about 10 different staff members and all they do is planning and grants.
Awesome.
And it's an amazing opportunity. I'll ask Scott to talk in a second about the needs assessment. But what we provided you as a proposal was an annual grant contract. Services where we begin with getting to know each of your departments. Each of you as town board members, the clerk and every department head. We understand your needs, put together a process and then we move forward with identifying grants on a monthly basis for you and then writing them. There's a difference between us and a few other firms. A few other firms have an annual retainer and they bill you every month like an attorney. We don't do that. We have hourly rates towards that cap. But anytime there's a grant that you may want to go for, we let you know about it. We discuss with you, but we need your authorization. So the funds are there if you need it. If you don't use the budget line, you save the budget line. So when you're budgeting for your following years, this is what the town of Pauling did. They hired us in mid-year. They used half a year and then started a new contract over again. They didn't use all the money. So they saved it. So it's really a grant to them, but it's in their budget. I don't believe in charging for services not rendered. We don't like retainers where you pay us every month no matter what. We want to make sure you're getting the service, we're getting the solution, we're getting the product and you have a good relationship moving forward. And I want to ask Scott to talk more about the needs assessment process and then talk more about how we develop supporting documentation.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
Thank you. So the needs assessment process, what we do, well, what I would do actually is I would come down. I would schedule meetings with yourselves, with your department heads and really start to get an idea of what your projects are. And I'm kind of cutting to the end when I say this, but what we do is we take a project-based approach. When I meet with your team, what we do is we get a list, we go through. The end result is you will get a, almost like a booklet like that. You get a report back of everyone we spoke to, what they talked about, what their major needs are and how we can go about helping to get funding assistance to get those needs met. In addition, you will get what we call a matrix, a funding matrix attached to that. And what that is, is a comprehensive list of what opportunities exist, what project they will go towards and when they become available, what your local match requirement may be. It's all kind of spelled out well in advance. And that helps you, the decision makers, plan ahead for this is what we want to go for, this is the project we want to see. What do we have to do to prepare for that?
And there's a reason, I want to highlight one part of that because there's a reason why Scott's team puts the funding match in. And often in many communities, people write grants, whether the department heads and they come to you with a grant opportunity, you have a match requirement. If you don't know what that match is, you can't budget for that.
Right.
And so now all of a sudden, you're left having to pass a resolution that you're going to commit funds that you don't even have in your budget. So if you're beginning to plan a year, two, three years in advance, you can begin looking with your controller or your financial people, what the bond may be in the future and how to start building that into it. City of Albany does that on an annual basis. They know what they want to apply for as they build their budget. That way the funds are available when they win. Now, you don't always have to have it in pocket when you apply, but you have to have it in the following year. So it allows you to do your financial planning as well as your grant and programmatic planning.
Yeah, John. Well, I want to make a point though. We asked John Tegger to be here. John's our town planner. And I know that a lot of these responsibilities have fallen to your department in some fashion.
In all fashions.
And so, we, in all fashions. So I want to make sure we're clear though. We're not, this is not to diminish anything that your department has done. We have a lot of confidence in our planning department. We think our planning department employees are fantastic. They do a great job. But I want to make sure that should we go down this road, there's clear synergy between what, the services you're going to provide and our planning department. I mean, obviously all of our departments, but specifically our planning department because you've overseen a lot, I would say a vast majority.
Vast majority, not all.
Not all, but a vast majority of the grants of the town is secured over the years. Not just writing the grants, but administering the grants.
And that's the hard part of it. The writing sometimes is really the minimal part of it, but the administration of it, particularly when you have a real job to do.
Yes. It's, there's a lot of work involved in the administration of the grants. That's for certain.
We're available for that as well. So what we do, for example, if you have a planning department, it's the City of Albany. Chris Spencer is their Commissioner of Planning. We support their staff and we've become an extension of their staff. It allows them to prioritize their projects and other areas of city planning, be it the zoning, be it strategic planning, be it any of the projects in the wards. And it allows us to do the grant administration, which comes out of the grant and allows the planners to do the planning work. We become that resource, that team member. We don't take away anything. We're there as on-call as needed. But it's not to remove, well, it's to remove the stress and the strain like to do that for job.
The stress and the strain to go away.
He looks relieved. He looks relieved.
Scott gets all the stress and the strain.
Scott, you know, the matching portion of the grant is varied depending on how big it is and like that. The more you have matching, the faster it goes on and like that.
Correct.
So what we need to do, something is about the funding for the sewer project we have in a pipe and water and you know, so many other, erosion, whatever, you know, anyone. So something can work out. It'll be great.
How would it work? Couple of things. We're going to be midway through the year, I would imagine. Or at least a portion of the way through the year. CFAs due?
July 24th or July 31st. They haven't announced it yet. Traditionally, it's the last Friday of July. This year is five Fridays. I'm hoping that the government gives us to July 31st because invariably you can always use the extra week.
Right.
However, as a grant writer with a family, July 24th is fine to get an extra week vacation.
That's it. Exactly. Exactly. So what are our, what are your expectations when it comes to the timeline we're working on? I mean, just to manage our own because we got a small window really to do. Because it's not, it's not, we're not talking about nothing. We're talking about it a full assessment, right? We're just going to take a bit of an effort and then to apply what your findings are to that matrix and that matrix to the proper funding apparatus, correct?
Correct.
So what are those expectations if we were to begin?
Okay, so I like to be safe and conservative. I like to say from the time we start the conversations with your team, about a month. And then you have a matrix, your assessment in hand to go from there. When we're talking about CFAs, actually when we're talking about any grants that you're applying for in the year of, what we're really applying for is projects that are going to take place in 2021.
Yes.
So what do you have planned? And that's what we're going to talk, that's what we would talk about.
Right. Those are all the things that we discussed.
What are we going to get lined up and how are we going to phase it properly so that you get maximum funding assistance? How do we line it up so that you're awarded as many points as possible for each application and position you to get that done? The other big thing is we want to make sure you're as project-ready as you can be, which is when we work very closely with your staff, your department heads and your leadership to get everything lined up just so, so that when that application gets submitted, you are getting as many points as you possibly can get.
Perfect. Would you be able to review CFAs that we've already submitted?
We request them.
Great. Because I know we submitted a CFA last year specifically for McEgan Lake. We did not get the grant that the town was hoping for, for that particular project. And so, well, we got a DEC grant for $30,000, which we're working with Ken Belfer and Diana on right now and as well as Adam with the RFP. But there was a much larger grant that we were trying to secure. And I know they do, they do an audit, or not an audit, but a review of the application. Unfortunately, I didn't get the letter until the deadline was actually, yeah. So the deadline to request was January 4th. I didn't get the proper paperwork. I think it was in the second or third week of January.
You may still be able to call as a newly elected.
I requested and they, you know, they're not being very cooperative. So my question for you though is would you, I'm guessing or assuming that you have the experience necessary to do that review for us to help guide us so that maybe this coming CFA, we can improve our score on that particular project.
Yes, we would do the review anyway. As Ben mentioned, that's something we request right off the bat anyway. That is something we look at and we have, I think, pretty good contacts with a lot of the funding agencies. We've worked with them for many years, not as many years as Ben, but many, many years nonetheless.
Call me old. Experienced.
So these are only the state funding opportunity or only the federal?
We primarily work with state and federal. We don't do a lot of the nonprofit work. However, if there are nonprofit grants that you're aware of in local foundations, we can use, they write those. What we don't do is write everything in the world for you all the time. It wastes your money. If there's 15, if there's a new program in the federal level that gives out $50 million and it's geographically dispersed at a million or a million and a half per state, give or take. Now you're looking at New York State, there's only a million or a million and a half left if you go around. Your chances are very low unless you have a spectacular project with a funding gap. We have to weigh the pros and cons each time of applying for it. We don't do a scatter approach.
Right.
And there is something else, you know, the poor municipality versus, you know, not so rich. But is there any kind of a problem, you know, getting the Yorktown?
There are many grant programs state have that give priority to lower income communities and some of those that are not. Even the New York Water Grants. So you have a $14 million project.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought this up.
You have 10 million already. New York Water can co-fund that. You can go for their funding, which is 60%, no more than $3 million of the remaining amount. So it's not 60% of 14 million, it's 60% of the 4 million.
Of the 4 million.
That you can go for.
Really great, you know?
Right.
Because he knew we could go for a number of grants.
There are.
You know, and as a former department head, I can tell you while you focus on some stuff, you miss a lot of stuff. And to have another set of eyes.
And that ability of our team, I didn't mention, but Scott's also a former town board member. My government ops team has a former county manager and a former mayor and a former town supervisor. So we've done it, been there, been in your shoes. But what makes us unique and special as a grant firm is the rest of the organization. It's having the full suite of engineers and planners that work with us. You may have heard us talk before about how to develop a successful application is to A, start early, B, have the supporting documentation. So my engineers and our grant writers work hand in hand a little differently. Oddly enough, we don't let an engineering report leave the office without a grant writer reading it first. Now, the grant writer's not reading it for technical jargon. They're not going to tell an engineer how to design a water wastewater, but they're going to make sure that the language they need to write the application or the language they need to support the application is in that report before it goes out. We've also begun requiring every engineering report to have an IUP and Intenduse Plan listing because grant funders want to make sure that you've gone elsewhere, not just to them. We now, if you're eligible, you're not. But for the rural areas of our state, we require them to do a PED, a Preliminary Eligibility Determination for USDA funds because they need to make sure you've gone elsewhere. So we build what's called a funding quilt. Now, Mr. Patel's heard me talk about this before because he's been at my presentations. But we call, we've coined a phrase called developing a funding quilt. Long gone are days you can go to the one agency and get a million dollars. Now you have to go to two or three and leverage those funding. And when Scott does his needs assessment, he identifies a different opportunities and different matches and when they come together. So now we just created a mini funding quilt for your water project with the 10 million have already plus New York Water. New York Water is going to be doing September again this year. So to win that, you have to be, in order to be successful to apply for that, you need to have certain things involved. You want to go over what you need involved for that?
Well, the engineering report for one, you're going to need one of those.
May I just say something before you start? What is really the cost initial to initiate the project, you know?
Well, we gave you a proposal of 3,000 a month, total of 36,000 for the year. And well, for example, last year we did, we got 1.5 million for City of Albany alone on a $32,000 investment for the year. City Hudson, they're 1.7 million last year. Town of Brookhaven, they won 20 million on one shot when we did their MCEC. So it all depends on the program. But for you, because you're starting in mid-year, it's less in your budget. And if you don't use it all, it's not, you don't use it all.
Well, that's the key. If you don't use it all, if you don't use the full allotment, then it stays in the pot.
I think your department heads will come down here and sit down and be very happy to meet these gentlemen.
Well, I think so.
Do we have a town engineer here right now? It would be nice to be able to.
Mr. Quinn should be in the building.
Yeah, maybe you can call him. You can just sit here a couple of minutes, you know?
He should be in the building. Any questions, John, from you? That's where.
Unfortunately, really, I don't think I have many questions. I mean, I understand where these guys are going and I think one of the keys I'd like to highlight is that they're looking for shovel-ready type projects. And I think that we have been in the past guilty, in particular with the CFA, of employing a little bit of a scatter approach sometimes. We have gotten some grants that we, in hindsight, weren't quite ready to spend money. So I think it'd be good to have a group like this on board to at least guide us and tell us when we're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Well, I think you nailed it. And I think the word I would use is precision, right? We're trying to be as precise as we can and nail the mark.
For what it's worth, just to kind of piggyback off of what you just said, I today had a conversation with one of our other clients who was telling me this story about a few years ago, they were awarded a grant and they got it taken away because they weren't ready to spend it. It sat there for three, maybe four years and they were successful enough to get the funding, but they didn't budget for the match requirement. So their $100,000 sat there and ultimately they had to pull it back because they weren't, they weren't ready. They didn't budget ahead of time.
Right.
How large the awards?
Well, that one in particular was a 50-50 match that they were working on and they didn't bother to budget.
They're now working with us in 2021 and we go into budget season toward up.
Right.
So we will, we've got some time to get some money.
And the supporting documentation you need for next year begins now. In your packet, there should be an article that we wrote called "The Vince Lombardi Approach to Grant Writing." Vince Lombardi was a football coach who said, "If you're early, you're on time. 15 minutes early, you're on time. If you're on time, you're late. Don't bother showing up." So when people ask us, "When do I begin writing the grants?" I say, "August 1st." And they go, "Well, we just submitted the grant last week." And I go, "Exactly." You're now beginning to plan for next year. You're planning your projects. If you need an income survey for something, if you need an engineering report for something, if you need a needs assessment for something, you plan for that. So when we have clients that said, "How do I get going on a water project?" And the first thing is to look at, well, what's the problem? Next thing you have to have is the engineering report. Every funding agency that funds water and wastewater needs to have an engineering report. That report has to get written to the 10 state standards and is accessible or usable for all the different agencies. But you have to have that in place to be able to move forward. You can't come to me in June and say, "I have a water problem and I don't have a report yet. I want a grant due."
Right.
Going back to New York Water, you also had, and up to last year, last year changed, up to last year, you had to have bond resolution or a financing plan. You had to have district formation as a town. You had to have your engineer on board and your attorney on board and your environmental done to qualify to submit. Now, the funding plan's a little different. You don't have to pre-bond it. Before you had a bond resolution. That was very difficult because you as a town board had to go to the public and say, "Hey, trust me, I'm going to take, approve a $16 million bond, but I'm really, I'm only going to bond 10 of it."
That was before application. Now you still do need a bond resolution if you're awarded. You need a bond resolution before you go to contract.
Yeah, this is really good news. Yeah.
You know it. So Town of Moreau, and I will send you the presentation we gave in New York City last week. There are two presentations we gave. One, it was called Chicken and the Egg, What Comes First? Economic Development or Infrastructure? And the first hour was Economic Development Planning Leading Infrastructure. And Town of Plattsburgh Supervisor spoke with us, presented on his experience. The second hour was Infrastructure Leading Economic Development. And Town of Moreau Supervisor spoke about that project with us. Both of them are our clients. Both of them had experiences and we just were able to take out the animation and make a PDF that went out to participants this morning. So I can send it to you all.
You could. That'd be great. Yeah.
So you have it. And the Moreau example was a $16 million sewer extension they needed to do to bring it to the Northway.
Sounds familiar.
Now, they tried three times, three administrations tried to do this and they couldn't craft it. We rearranged it. We brought in the mobile, we brought in the mobile home parks. And we got a bond, we got the district formed. And the bond resolution, he said flat out, "You have to trust your elected officials or you'll vote us out." "I need to pass a bond resolution for 16 million, but we're only moving forward if we hit these marks." He got a $10 million or $12 million, excuse me, 0% loan through EFC. And then he got a $4 million New York Water Grant. Now we're going for another million on top of that to make it a little easier.
Excuse me, we have Supervisor, is the town engineer, anybody question? Maybe Mike, do you want to come and ask any questions in reference to the grant? Because something really, I was not sure that, you know, you need the bonding before, you know?
You're going to get yelled at. You gotta go next to, you gotta go over. The blue tape. Otherwise, the man in the back yells. So.
I heard $12 million for sewer projects. I ran up here.
There you go. Cash is in the trunk.
Hey, Mike, friend side.
So I met, again, just as a quick intro, I met Ben over at Association of Towns and we're just discussing some of the services his firm provides.
I heard everything downstairs.
Great. So you're up to speed.
Either I was very loud or you had a speaker down there.
Any questions you might have?
You would like, you would like to.
Yeah, I think, you know, we love more resources. You know, there are grants. They're usually tight timeframes. We're focused on like some of the engineering reports. I think John mentioned, you know, you have to have shovel-ready projects. So we focus a lot on just getting ready to apply for grants, but having another resource would be wonderful.
And the other thing that I think it would do is it would actually help our department heads in a mindset, having them understand what's needed to accomplish what we're trying to do here. And like you said, August 1 comes and you're already applying for the next one.
You're already getting ready for next year.
And so having them, having that, having them almost trained in that mindset, I think is critically important because it's going to help us get closer to those shovel-ready projects and help us score better on the applications. And you know, the collaboration, I think, is critical. But it's also making sure they understand what is needed, how it's implemented, how it's administered. And they see the, you know, the five-dimensional scope of a true grant program.
People think that grant writing is simply filling out boxes. That's the easy part.
Right.
It's all, it's like when you're cooking. It's easy just to put the ingredients in. It's getting all the ingredients together. Ever watch Cooking Show? Everything's on those little glass dishes and you just pop it all in. All the work was getting that ready.
Yeah.
Same thing here. All the work is getting the ingredients together for your application.
They call it in the restaurant industry, the mizzenplus, getting everything in place.
Absolutely.
You know, it's difficult because you're doing that and I speak because my department, we won several grants while I was the clerk, being able to cut that mizzenplus while you're doing something else. And I think the fact that they can rely on someone else, just helping them through it. Sometimes you just want that helping hand.
But it's also, it's also about giving them the helping hand and the resources, but they do so much after that.
Oh, that's exactly what I'm saying.
And quite frankly, I mean, I can tell you from the eight weeks that I've been here, I see our department heads and they're, you know, they're feeding from a fire hose, quite frankly. And so to be able to take something so important and I don't want to say off their plate, but relieve some of that pressure, I think is just very important operationally for how we function moving forward.
And now it's more technical than it had been years ago. I just think it's a win-win for us.
Yeah, it is. I mean, I think.
And Scott's a walking encyclopedia. He becomes your liaison. So on a monthly, on a monthly basis, you can get a report back, what you can look at. And a grant comes in, he calls you right away. He'll do a memo and his team will send it out to you guys and you share. Because once you're with us for service, we let you know all the grants that meet the needs that you identified both in your needs assessment. Once we know more about the engineering reports you have and the comp plan, even though it's outdated that you have, we find these projects, we put them into place.
Great.
And your first call is always going to be Scott.
Yeah, I think this is a very laudable task that we have to, you know, delve into. We've been talking about it for as long as I've sat on the town board and it's probably been talked about before that. And the, I mean, like you say, our department heads are drinking out of a fire hose, for God's sakes, trying to get these things done. And it's very tough for them. So if we can take some of that off of them so they can concentrate on actually getting the shovel-ready stuff ready for you guys to apply for, I think would be a laudable thing to do.
Any other questions from the board? Because we are well over time. I already messed up.
Thank you.
The good thing about the money is that with one grant, we could win that.
I mean, the return on investment is incredible. I mean, that's how I look at it.
Yeah, I agree with that.
The ROI is, you know, 36,000, you get a $100,000 grant. Okay, sign me up.
And the way that the firm structures that, the GSAs, where you're only spending money on what you authorize us to do.
Correct.
Having said that, I like to win.
That's what I like to hear.
Because it's just, well.
We like to win too.
I know it's easy to say that. It's another thing to mean it and take it seriously. The amount of work that my team has to do to get your return on investment, it means I need to win. Otherwise, I expended a lot of hours and resources for not.
Well, good. Hopefully good.
Always good. Always good. Nothing ever bad.
Well, give us a good water and a good sewer, over capable solutions. And I think it is the best interest of the New York DEC to provide the water to New York City. From here, we can be clean, you know? Thank you.
Any other questions? John, do you have any questions while you're here?
No, I just want to bring in and remind everyone that we do have the capital plan that we've been working on over the last number of years, which is a good footprint.
Yes.
And springboard. Our problem has been grappling with how we get some funding. So if we take this grant plan and apply it to our capital plan, I think your department heads will be quite happy because they will see some of the projects that they've identified as important, possibly actually getting off the ground in the time that they anticipate that they need them. And I think that would be a very big situation.
That's a great point, John. That's a great point.
So if we were retained, the first thing we'll do is request those documents, John. We'll request your comp plan, your capital improvement plan, any engineering reports you have or projects that are beginning to get ready. So we get more familiarization. Then Scott will send out a questionnaire to each of the town board members and each of the department heads in preparation for the day's worth of interviews. Then Scott will come down, whether it's me and Scott or Scott and somebody else will come down. We'll meet here interviewing you guys all. Maybe we'll even separate and hit two at a time. And then we'll take a town tour to see everything we just heard about.
Great.
And then his team goes back and develops a needs assessment.
Perfect.
Now, in that needs assessment, there are often times you can prioritize, but your prioritization has to be fungible based upon the priorities of the funding agencies. Well, maybe your third priority, maybe the top priority that year in the CFA, well, guess what your number one priority is gonna be now?
Yeah, yeah.
So you can, that just, you have to be flexible with that.
I would like to hear from you once you've gotten to meet our team, what you think we would be eligible for.
Absolutely. Because, well, we look at what you'll be eligible for that year and then the year after.
Correct.
Because Scott hit the nail on the head when he said project readiness. Often, the first thing we hear at these interviews is how to stop the bleeding in departments. How can I fund personnel or pieces? We're looking for the projects that you want an investor in. And when you're asking for a funding agency for a grant, you're asking them to invest in your community over 650 other communities. So what makes your project more beneficial? What makes your project special that you want the public to invest in you? So we have to spin that tail, but we also have to be able to show where the other investment's coming. It's not always a handout. So next year's presentation, by the way, an article we're gonna be writing for Association of Towns, is "How to Turn a Handout to a Handshake." And last year, we spoke about that, what happens when you lose?
Right.
And the seven stages of grief. We put that into grant writing. And what happens when you lose a grant? And in that presentation, we came out and said, "We're gonna help you turn a handout to a handshake." Now, I gotta write a whole article on that.
There you go.
It is why you're, you know, really pointing, you know, because everything goes from the water, becomes sewer, and then ends up there. So DEC is really very, very interested in and provide to 8, 10 million people of the New York City, you know? Big, big investment.
So you have a lot of opportunity here. Now, if we're able, even if you get one grant the first year, and the next year build into three, then five and more.
Right. You just gotta get points on the board.
You gotta start.
You gotta start.
But you can't start without a game plan. No coach ever goes into a football game without a game plan. You can't go into a grant.
That was the thing that was most appealing when I heard when I met with Ben was, it was the assessment. It was, it was the game plan. And it was actually sitting down and being precise and formulating what that plan was and not just guessing and hoping and trying to, you know, do the shotgun approach and try to get anything and everything we can. Let's be precise. Let's invest our time wisely. We've got great department heads who I think are gonna really benefit from having an organization like this as part of our team. And so I do really appreciate your time. I know you drove down from the Albany area.
Actually, I was in Rock Cliff all day.
Well, there you go.
We were doing village, we were doing village and town court consolidation today.
There you go.
During the day.
Awesome. Awesome. I got cards right here. And you're gonna send over the presentations from AOT?
Yes.
I should've put one.
No, there was one here.
We got some right here, and I've got your contact.
And we're gonna send the third one, which was the capital improvement program presentation we gave to.
Fantastic. Fantastic. We really do appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Look before I fell down.
In the meantime, I would encourage any, by all means, give me a call, shoot me an email for any questions at all in the meantime.
I went to college up in here, Nicholas. I went to Cobles School. Yeah. Not really. No, no, no. His grand says probably the cross.
All right.
Okay.
Good seeing you again.
Next is Eugene McGrath here. Eugene, how you doing?
I'm a lot smarter than these guys.
That's good. That's perfect. That's perfect. I'm sorry that we're...
Not a problem.
It's an exciting conversation. So, Mr. McGrath, good evening.
Good evening.
See you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Eugene, Eugene is here on behalf of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, Westchester NAMI, about a special way of raising awareness this year. So, Mr. McGrath, if you don't mind, why don't you tell the board what you'd like to do?
Sure. So as the supervisor said, and thank you for having me, it'll be quick. I am representing NAMI of Westchester, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And what we did last year was we had gotten permission from the town to hang ribbons on, for Mental Health Awareness Month, which is May, along Commerce Street. This year, I had to come out as the volunteer. I'm gonna be placing the ribbons along with several other people from the community. So I needed to come in front of you and get your authorization to do that. I would like to expand that to other areas of town, not too many, where there's pedestrian traffic. So I'd like to do Commerce...
Shervuk.
I'm sorry?
Shervuk and East Main Street.
That's exactly, that's on my note here. Yes, so I wanted to do East Main Street, Commerce Street, possibly around a pavilion. We would not do it on private property because we don't have their permission to do it.
You say pavilion? Can you be more specific, please?
If there's town property by the Jack DeVito Pavilion.
Oh, okay. The gazebo. Okay. I'm veterans, okay?
Do it there as well. If there's any other places in town that you guys think would be open to that.
I know we have our park superintendent here. Jimmy, do you mind jumping up real quick?
There are ribbons that, they just come on a roll. We cut them, we tie them on the tree of the pole, and then we move down to the next.
I'm just wondering if there are any other parks that we want to include?
Obviously Downing Park, Granite Knolls, even Legacy. It'd be nice to have ribbons over there as well.
Okay. That'd be great. And I'll make sure that we get the ribbons up. The timeframe is to get them up the first weekend of May, May 2nd and 3rd, to get them down May 30th or 31st.
Okay. Nathan, can I just ask you one thing? Besides the ribbons, which we wanted you to call attention to that particular month, are you gonna have pamphlets with phone numbers in various town locations? And I ask you that because, you know, the thing that happened in New York City, and my father was New York City cop, that was really distressful.
With the detectives, is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes.
But when you think about it, there are lots of people that have those days when, by the, but for the grace of God.
Right. Absolutely.
And so to have a phone number...
Well, I would also offer, in May, I would welcome you either in advance of May or in May, our first town board meeting. I think it'd be great to have you come and do a, you or NAMI, whoever, a presentation at our first town board meeting to highlight the month. And, you know, we'll pass a resolution recognizing the month as the town.
That'd be fabulous.
You may also wanna advertise the walk down in Rye.
Yeah.
They have a walkathon too, and we actually go there.
There's a lot of resources online as well, but absolutely having things readily available, you know, takeaways are always a good thing to have.
Yeah, right.
I was actually just gonna look. Do you know if they are involved in the, in our resource guide for the police department?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll look it up. I just need to find it.
We'll find out. But anything that we can do as a town government and a community to support, you know, this organization and advocate for the services that it provides, and also make sure that those in need are getting those services. We're always open to suggestions and recommendations.
Excellent.
You know, I feel if we only get to one person, that's that person I want.
Well worth every penny.
That's it.
Yes, yes.
I want to ask you something else. When you put the ribbon, is there any other organizations, you know, you know, because there are so many times we put the different ribbons at a different time of the year. So make sure there is no, you know...
For May?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll check. I'm not aware of any. Diane, are you aware of any?
June is the, June is the...
Yeah, okay.
Right, right. But I don't know of any for May. But, yeah, so again, I would, I'm perfectly fine with, I think this is a great idea, but I also would encourage you to come back for a presentation to the town board, and I can coordinate that, whether you wanna do it in the month of May.
Okay.
Or, you know, directly proceeding when you even put them out, so we can let the residents know what they're seeing, you know, instead of just seeing orange ribbons. So we can plan that for the end of April.
Right.
We'll have you and your organization come and just let the public know why they're seeing these ribbons. And I think that's an important educational aspect.
And, you know, because if you drive by, you walk by, you don't even notice them. But if you have awareness ahead of time, it's gonna resonate with you, and it's gonna be there, and you say, "Oh, yeah, that's what they were talking about."
Exactly, exactly.
You know, when you hear that story about that man, and you guys have heard it, who said, "If one person would've said to me something fine..."
The guy that's called the gay pride.
Yep, that's it.
It would've stopped me.
That was a powerful presentation.
Yeah.
Huge presentation.
You know, they are going to have something in Yorktown High School. Is that date? I don't have the date here.
Save a Life Program? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Maybe there is something, you know, that...
And that's something that we can connect you with, York County Alliance for Safe Kids on, is our Save a Life Program. I believe it's March 22nd, I wanna say.
It's in March, right? Okay.
I don't remember off the top of my head, but it's in the month of March, so I'm sure we can connect you with the...
Yeah, I knew some of the resources in that organization. My kids went through the schools.
March 22nd.
No, yeah, it's March 22nd at the Yorktown High School.
And then they have a walkathon on...
The walkathons at FDR in April 17th, so...
Yeah, it's Sunday. It's on a Sunday.
Great. Mr. McGrath, thank you so much. Thank you for leading the cause on this. We appreciate it.
April 9th is on that walk.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. McGrath. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you.
Okay.
Jimmy.
We are looking not for Jim Moderno Jr., but Jim Moderno Sr. And we also have Bob Giordano as well. Bob, both gentlemen, so as everyone may or may not know, Mr. Moderno is the chair of our Ethics Committee. Mr. Giordano was recently appointed, I believe, right, to the Ethics Committee? There are two items that we're gonna be discussing.
What city, Jim used to sit here?
Larry Killian with us as well?
What city he used to sit here?
So we have two items that we're gonna be discussing. The first is a complaint that was filed in October of 2019 that I believe you've rendered a decision on.
Decision was, these are two gentlemen from the...
Use the mic. And then the second was, we were gonna talk about a couple of proposals or visions that I think you had a conversation with the committee on.
First of all, Larry and Bob are new additions to the board. This decision was, when I was in the chair, it was Al Durante. Larry's just coming up from Brooklyn, visiting his grandchildren. This was, decision was authored and agreed to by Al Durante. He authored it, and we all chimed in, but he was the chairman at the time. And so the hearings that were held and the questioning witnesses that were done were done under the old board. These two gentlemen are with the brand-new board, and I must say, they've already made a huge impact on the board, and I thank them both for that. I also wanna thank all of you. I mean, I know what it's like to sit on the town board, having done it for 20 years. It's not an easy job. They're long hours. I can't believe they're televised these things, but it's okay. It's okay. Thanks, Tommy.
Tommy's getting upset back there.
The first thing the Ethics Board wants is we would like our salary to be doubled.
Doubled from zero?
From zero.
Okay. You guys got it.
We'll triple it.
You got it. Done. The easiest decision of the night.
No, I really wanna thank all of you for all the hours you put in. You know, there's, people don't understand the blood, sweat, and tears that goes into being on a town board on all levels, to being also where Diana's sitting also, her job. You know, it has to come from the heart. You all do it because you care about the town, you care about public service. And people will never know all the hours you put in and the care you put in. But I know.
Yeah, no kidding, huh? Jeez.
I know because I was there, and I understand.
I know you know.
So I know, I want you to know, I appreciate it.
Oh, we appreciate you and the members of the board and all the work that you all do.
Same thing with the Ethics Board. These young men who recently are on it are already hard at work, Larry especially, is doing a project for us. What happened in this complaint was that we looked at, we were forced to look at the law regarding the revolving door. And when we looked at the law, we found that it was incoherent. It talks about, it's 455I, I believe. It talks about there's a presumptive conflict of interest if within a year after you leave public office, you go before a board on a project. And it's presumptive, however, it's rebuttable. And what rebuts it, who knows? And it talks about, it's rebuttable if the person, if the respondent, the person that's accused of having the conflict can demonstrate that there is no conflict, but then it doesn't define what conflict is. So in this particular case, we felt that the respondent came before the board and explained himself, I thought, pretty thoroughly and, I think, pretty eloquently, and convinced us that, in fact, in this particular case, he had no conflict. us that, in fact, in this particular case, he had no conflict. And since we couldn't figure out what conflict actually is, this decision came forward. However, we've looked at, and Larry has taken the impetus on this, other towns and other ethics laws. And it's much more clearly defined in other jurisdictions. So we would like to, we would like to change, at least submit to, and that's one of our, if you look at 45, I think it's 4510, 4510C, talks about one of the powers of the Ethics Board, and one of its powers and duties, I should say duties more than power, we have no real power, you have the power, we submit recommendations to you. But one of our duties is to make recommendations concerning the law itself. And we would like to ask your blessing, if we're going to go back to the drawing board, look at all different jurisdictions and try to clean up some of the ambiguities that we believe exist in the present law.
Absolutely.
Thanks to the work of this gentleman right here, this gentleman here, and the other members that are not here.
I think it's great. This is something, this is a conversation that we've had as a Board?
No, I think it's great that they've had the years since the law was passed to find out where their, the potholes are.
Right.
And I think that you were eloquent in saying that, particularly you as an attorney, who can look at the law a lot differently than I look at it, I thank you for coming forward and offering.
What you're talking about, Jim, is something that we as a Board, I think, we're hoping to see this year, which is having our committees take a hard look at how they operate and the governing, you know, documents that they have, that they get their authority from, that dictate what their responsibilities are. And if you have suggestions, ways you want to enhance those documents and your responsibilities, or maybe shed responsibilities, then you bring them back to you, you propose with suggestions to the Board, and then we can go through a process of deliberating that.
For example, 4518, which in the past, which talks about the Town Attorney being an ex-official member of the Town, of the Ethics Board. In the past, and predating my attendance on the, of being appointed to Ethics Board, and during my attendance on the Ethics Board, there were occasions which we felt there were the conflict of interests between-
So it was 4518, what was the?
I'll look at, 4518.
18, thank you.
4518 says that the Town Attorney is an ex-official member of the Ethics Board. And what that means is that the Town Attorney can insist, and nothing against the Town Attorneys, by the way, we love the Town Attorneys.
No offense, Adam.
We love the Town Attorneys.
We do. We love the Town Attorneys. Always have. And the Town Attorney might be caught in a position where he or she-
Absolutely.
-feels conflicted. In other words, if you're supposed to represent the Board, if there's a complaint against a Board Member and/or Supervisor, the Town Attorney is put in an awkward position.
Yes.
We may have a confidential meeting where we have to discuss something, which then the Town Attorney, as the Attorney for the Board-
Right. Yeah, yeah. You can see the gray area, I think.
So we had a situation where, at one particular time, we asked a certain Town Attorney to leave the room, and he refused. And unless you give us a Sergeant-at-Arms, which I don't think you're about to put in your budget.
As long as they get paid the same salaries, yeah.
Maybe quadrupled.
Joe, when you're done, I want to speak a couple of questions, okay?
So unless you're willing to do that, we felt that the Town Attorney should, of course, be made available to the Ethics Board, should we have a legal question-
Of course.
Or we need research. However, that particular section, 4518, I think should be at least enhanced or changed or maybe eliminated, because we don't want to have that situation that we had in the past that happened again.
Right. And I think there were a few others that you and I had-
We're going to revamp them. We're going to look at the whole thing. Larry's already in the middle of it, the poor man, and he's looked at several jurisdictions.
Well, the fact that you're looking at what other municipalities do, I mean, we had our Park Superintendent come to us at the last work session with the Town of Lewisborough's code when it comes to smoking, and was able to provide a great example of a model ordinance. And so it's great to hear, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. It's great to hear that you're doing that analysis for us, so we appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so my turn, can I speak something? I have a whole bunch of questions.
Very nice with the gray and the purple, by the way.
Let me tell you, you know, Mr. Levantall, he wrote something up. Are you aware of what was done?
Yes, no, not only that, but we have, that's one of the things we're considering. We have a copy of it. That was the, you know, that was the proposal that the outgoing Chairman before Al, and I think you may have a copy of that, right? We have a copy of that. We're going to look at that.
Because I was able to speak to him-
Yes.
-at the Association of the Town. Last 11 years, I go to their lecture all the time, and those guys, they agree with whatever was sent by them from the other complaints like that, okay? And that's why I had to bring my own lawyer. But that's another thing.
We have that in here.
May I just say a few more things, then we can, okay? Do you want to make this law, Board, weaker or stronger? Because you've got to have a cop on the beat.
I think what we're looking for is clarity. So we're trying to make sure that there's greater clarity within the law.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so that's another good thing, you know? And then, you know, you have, everybody has to fill up the form something. Most of the people don't even fill it up. So what do you do with those members, you know?
Well, I can tell you right now, but anyway, this is the thing you're talking about.
Yeah, I have it.
And we're going to put that in the mix and consider it, and thank you for bringing that up. What has been the past procedure is that we're supposed to, Sergio is our new Secretary, and I keep telling him I'm going to bring food to the meetings, but he hasn't done that yet. What he's supposed to do is, we're supposed to notify the Department Heads and tell the Department Heads X, Y, and Z, you know, have not submitted the forms. And then the Department Head is supposed to get on X, Y, and Z's case and say, hey, look, you've got to submit the forms. We've never gone beyond that, because usually when that happens, they do submit the forms. So there are some people that we've identified as not submitting the forms, and I've asked Sergio to, don't forget the process, as you know, I think it starts in March and goes to May, and then we get these, you know, these filled-out-
For you to review, yeah.
And one of our functions is, we sit down in the room and we go through everybody's thing, and then certain people, now, we found that a couple of committees weren't even in the circulation list. A couple of new committees.
What do you mean by that?
The Boards, you know, the volunteer Board members.
There could be the Boards that don't, non-decision-making Boards, they just didn't show up. But we noticed that not all the Town Volunteer Boards were-
Volunteer Boards.
Were-
Were receiving the-
Why would you want them?
Well-
Because they could still be, they could still be discussing and presenting ideas to us.
I think that we have to change the code then.
Right, right, right.
We're just pointing out that we noticed that there were some, why are these Boards not in the group?
Some non-decision-making Boards were included, others were not, so, anyway, we just noticed that.
Either we're going to have non-decision- I agree. If you're on a Board, you've got to do it.
So that was-
I have one question in reference to this one, you know, when you propose whatever you, you know, from the discussion from the Board now, I think you tell, don't tell us, you know, you can tell us what it is, but you can just present to the public right here in open, you know, if there is something wrong, you can discuss with the Board before, yeah.
That's why we're having this conversation, is so they can inform us of what they see, since they're the ones administering-
Yeah.
-the Ethics Code.
But don't give us the power what to do, you know?
Well, if they see that there's deficiencies and there's ambiguities, which they are identifying, that's their, that's this whole exercise, so they can come back to us.
They still need to come to the Board, because we're the ones who have to vote on it.
There's a requirement for public hearing.
No, no, no.
Right.
But this report through the Levantall was very good, you know, I mean, he has, I've read it before, and some other Attorney, you know, and I've been going to, there was another guy before that, similar thing, you know?
Right, right. It was very good.
We appreciate all you do for the Town, what all of your Board Members do, and all of our Volunteer Board Members do, but we know that you take great pride in making sure that you uphold the standards of the Ethics Code, and we're looking forward to working with you to find ways to enhance and provide clarity on issues and see what other ordinances that you might find. And you don't have, the other thing I'll say is, you don't have to, frankly, if you, you know, I say it's everybody, but you don't have to wait for a work session or a Town Board meeting. If you have ideas, we have an open door policy. You can come meet with me or a Board Member anytime you want.
One of the sensitive areas of the Ethics Board is that it not become a political tool. Now, in the seven years that my predecessor, Al, was on the Board, he said only one complaint was not politically motivated or tainted or political, whatever. That was his opinion. The point is, though, we want to assure all of you that we're not only nonpartisan, we're completely removed from politics. All we care about is the enforcement of the Ethics Law.
Right.
Regardless of whatever. And it's very important. Because in the past, we got some anonymous complaints that were clearly politically motivated that we immediately threw out, because one of the requirements is, we don't entertain any complaint that's anonymous. We will not be a tool-
Correct.
...of any political nature.
Correct.
So I want you to have that assurance from us.
Correct. Now, if I can, just in regards to the findings here-
Yes.
-from a process standpoint, under the current Ethics Code, what are the next steps that need to be taken?
Yeah, there's no next step that needs to be taken. The Town Board, at this point, that was a dismissal of the complaint, and therefore there's nothing, and ends there. Had there not been a dismissal, then action would have been recommended by the Ethics Board, and the Town Board would be free to either take that action, take no action, or not even publish it. It's up to the Town Board.
And since it was-
Ultimately, you're the power.
My understanding was, since there was no finding on this, you weren't even required to present this to the Board.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. And that could be changed.
Which is-
And we could change that as well, and we can make it more clear.
Right.
The flow chart has a dismissal ending with-
I think that was one of the issues, that you have to bring clarity to what you want done.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
That helps you administer the law.
Absolutely.
Well, I think the thing we discussed was bringing the complaint to closure.
Right.
For everybody's satisfaction.
That's another thing.
Right? Whether it's, we take no action, or we made a recommendation, it's now in your hand, that the public know that it's over.
It's over, right, that there's not, it's not understanding, and you've done your due diligence, you've done your job on the matter.
Another issue that's sensitive, and it's, you have to really draw a balance here. Al Durante, who was excellent lawyer, his policy was to move things along at a rather slow pace, which, I understood that. That eliminates the immediate political impact of something you're going to do. On the other hand, it was my feeling, and Al knows I feel this way, and it's no, nothing against his opinion, but I felt that there's slow and then there's too slow. You can get so slow that you can, you look totally ineffective and you look like you're not doing your job. So as long as I'm shared-
Closure is a word I think that best captures what you're trying to achieve, because we are providing closure to the fact that you've done your due diligence, you've gone through the process, and ultimately, you made a decision.
One of the things we're considering in the new law is to put some type of time, 90 days, four months, whatever it is, we haven't talked about it yet. We want to, we don't want to be, again, part of any political machinations, and we don't want to move too expeditiously, we want to move carefully and with due consideration. However, we don't want to be so slow that we're meaningless.
Does it have to be medium that you got to find?
That's it, right, exactly. So that's what we're going to try to do.
Totally get it.
So I have a-
Of course, please.
Make it very clear at the end, and then the second thing, you say you want to raise your service is a six-figure salary called SMILE, S-M-I-L-E, is a six letter, okay? Thank you.
And accounts towards your pension, perfect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You have a great day.
I'm sorry. Diana's-
So if we're going to make that change, we start that in March. So if we're going to make changes this year, it's something that we really need to know ahead of it.
Probably next year. We're not going to be able to have it done by Marches next week.
Right. But the changes-
If you wanted to make changes, then we can hold off, and then you can do it.
Are you talking about who's required?
The change that you make to the law.
You have the current law, so we're not changing it this year.
Probably wouldn't start till next year, but it's going to take us a while, then we'll have to go through the process.
Right, so-
You might have to have a public hearing.
No, you don't have a public hearing to amend the law.
The law actually has the list of the committees in it, so that's what you're referring to. So if we wanted to add committees, we're still-
If you want to add to that committee, we'd have to go through the process of amending the law.
Right, that's part of the-
Add or remove certain committees.
Right.
And that triggers the public hearing.
We're going to shoot for next year.
It's everybody to get it.
All right.
Yeah, I think that should. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
Enjoy the evening.
Appreciate all your time.
Thank you, James.
You know, Matt had a question, you know?
I think there are two members have the same name here.
The question's for them?
Well, not really for us, for the Board.
What's that?
So we have a decision here where a case was dismissed, but unfortunately, as I pointed out, it was used as a political tool to disperse someone's reputation. I think we should make those, you know, make the results of that public. So.
But I think if that takes place, I think I'd have to take it to a regular Town Board meeting under a work session.
Yeah, I guess. You know, what does the code say with regard to making those decisions public?
Mr. Rodriguez, I don't think the code, well, I don't think the code require, it doesn't deny nor require?
There's no provision in the code for a dismissal, number one. So this has been written up basically of their own volition? Sorry. So effectively, the only time the code provides for a written document is, I think, when there's a recommendation to the Board of some sort of action to be taken, in which case that document would, by course, you know, be public.
You know what concerns me about a dismissal? Because, you know, sometimes people will hear you talk about it. I'm sorry. Sometimes people will hear you talk about that, but they won't hear the word dismissal. That's my concern. And I get nervous about that because the person that's behind the eight ball trying to say, no, it was dismissed against me. Well, why did the Board talk about it? So I think we need to consider what we want to do.
We, no, there's no public comment, I'm sorry, at a work session. Okay, so I think what we can do is, we can come back to this at a-
All right, I just think it's something for discussion, because, you know, like I said, it was publicized, which it shouldn't have been, it's supposed to be, and that alone, to me, dictates that we should talk about the exoneration.
And I think that Adam was hit the nail on the head. If you're going to dismiss something, then this should not have been given to us. This should not have been, because you know what? The law doesn't provide for a dismissal. And that's what happened in this case, and I don't know. I've got such mixed feelings about it. You know, I think when you got, when the Board decided to do an Ethics Law, I think that the law to me was really a guide for the Members, both of the Town Boards and the Volunteer Boards, as to what is expected of us. In terms of complaints, I'm not sure. You know, that's a discussion for me. I'd like to hear you-
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have any comment on that? Or otherwise, we're just going to move on with our-
I think we can move on. I was just going to add that I think, as a practical matter, this is something that should be looked at in the, you know-
Right.
-revisions of the code.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Okay, so then we'll just, we'll continue to move on then. We have Con Edison.
She's here. They're here.
Small team.
Con Edison.
Jenna?
Is this a con or Edison?
No, do you have your charger? My tablet? Mine's upstairs.
Thank you.
I wish we could have put that up, and you could refer to that, so people could see it rather than, Tom, can you get a shot of these papers that he has on the desk?
He's going to make you shift that way somewhat. Tom, can you get these?
Okay.
But how about, do you want to put something here? Do you have to put something?
It's upside down anyway.
Put it on there?
You want us to put it on the Board over here?
Then you can see from here, a shot back and forth, you know?
What is he saying?
On the easel.
On the easel, all right. Would you mind putting those on the easel?
You can move the camera that way, and these will go together, you know?
There's a piece of cardboard, so that they can.
There's clips on the top there, if you want to clip them. There you go. Or we just get a whiteboard.
And when you talk about it-
Or that.
You're going to grab a mic. We're going to get a wireless mic, so that we have one for that.
If you give me a wireless mic, I'm going to start seeing cable.
No, let's not, let's go down that, bro. Yeah.
I like that circa 1940s.
Dave, do you want to, are you okay there, or you want to be in the table? You're good where you are?
I'm good.
That was Newman's.
All right, so if you don't, you apologize. Do you want to provide us with some?
Okay. Grab a mic.
So, you're, yeah.
Okay, so we, good evening, we're here tonight to share with the Board.
Why don't you sit there, and then, there you go, perfect.
So we're here to share the-
Oh, actually, hold on a second, we have a, we're getting high-tech here, we have a wireless mic.
That guy will do anything to get out of the box.
Wow, TY.
This is the man in the box.
TY. Okay, continue, thank you.
So we're here tonight to share this year's plan, 2020 plan for the name replacement project that we've been working for the last few years throughout the Town here.
They're going here.
All right, so there's two projects that we've been actively working for the last few years. We have a system reinforcement project that we've been working, which is shown here.
There you go.
This is the project that we've been working on Gomer Street, where we've been bringing a new feed south.
Tell us from where to where.
I'm sorry?
Tell us from where to where on Gomer Street.
Well, we started up on Fairview Avenue, and we've been working our way south towards Granite Springs. Last year, we left about 100 feet north of Granite Springs Road.
Yeah.
Right now, our engineering department is in the process of validating the work that we've been doing the last couple of years, to determine whether or not we can change from a steel pipeline to a plastic pipeline. The remaining limits of the project are highlighted here, which run all the way to Granite Springs, over to Broad, and then north on Granite Springs to a newly installed regulator that we installed a few years ago, over here near, is that Sarls Drive?
You know that plate, you know that street, don't you?
I know that street. Why are you going to be on that street?
Well, it won't be on Sarls, it'll be on Granite Springs, just in the neighborhood.
Okay.
And how long, hopefully?
So that's the thing, like, so once engineering validates the fact of whether we still have to stay with the steel pipeline, or if we can transfer to a plastic pipeline, will really make a difference on the duration of the project. You know, we've been working the last three years on this project, and we've gotten about two and a half miles in. If it remains steel, the expectation is that we'll get down to Broad Street this year by the end of 2020, and then continue on the project next year, which we should be able to wrap up by next year. If it's determined that we can transfer to a plastic pipe, we should be able to get this entire project done this year, wrapping up by probably the end of October.
When are you going to know whether or not it's going to go plastic?
Within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Before we start, we'll know.
So question, with respect to the work that you've done on Broad Street, that's plastic, correct?
Yeah, so-
Now, are you going to continue down Broad Street?
Yeah, so that's the next, next day we're out here. So this is, this project, which we started working, I've got to spin it around. So this project here, which we started working last year, which was all, it was on Hanover Street, actually, we started two years ago, it was Moesman and Hanover, heading south Actually, we started two years ago, it was Moesman and Hanover, heading south towards...
Front Street.
118 there, yep, and we worked with it on Front Street. So, this is the remaining section of that project, which is here where we left off on Hanover and Underhill. We'd be working our way towards the center of town here, by the Triangle Shopping Center, up 20235 to Broad Street, and finishing off where we left off last year.
So, basically, you're gonna come through the center of town?
Correct.
All right, down Comer Street?
Yep.
Through the center of town? Hang a right on Route 35, go down to Broad Street, and then connect at Broad Street. The other segment will be the segment, Granite Springs Road, out to Broad Street, and then to the regulator, out on, I believe it's Sunrise, this private road there.
Now, the conditions we put in place with the cop, police officer?
Yes.
And notifying the residents in the area?
Yes.
That's gonna continue?
Correct, yeah, we're gonna be following the same protocol we've been following.
I believe that, I believe that you were funding two police officers, right?
Yep.
But now, was there, was there additional resources provided to the department to, for tertiary roads? So, if you're doing a detour, you have two police officers. But I don't, I'm not aware of any additional funding if there is additional resources needed.
We haven't needed in the past, but if that situation arises, you know, we're up for discussion, so, whatever we need to do.
During the school AM and dismissal time, you know? I think we probably needed more help, because all buses goes out at the same time.
Yeah, so we were on Broad Street last year, a little further north of Brookside School. And, you know, we worked it out with the school buses and the cops, and, you know, we had very minimal complaints on the roadway.
When you do 35, what's the plan of action for 35? Because that's, that's gonna be...
Alex Mills Road.
Yeah, so that's a state road.
I know it's a state road, but what, like, do we know, do you have any idea what time of the day? Do you know, is that night work? Is that, I mean, there's really no great answer there.
I mean, you know, I know there is some residences in the neighborhood there, I don't know if night work would be...
Where's your line run on 35? It's run in which lane? Is it in the center of the road? Is it off to the side?
It's in the northbound lane.
Okay.
Yeah, towards Hugging the Curve, the eastern curve.
So then, that's still gonna cause you go from, you're gonna have to go down to one lane, correct?
We'll have to, yeah, we'll be taking up one lane.
You'll be taking up one full lane, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, because rush hour gets...
Harry.
Harry is a good...
Yeah, typically, typically, the state will give us like, say, 9 to 3 steps, or 9 to 30.
The state's pretty specific about the hour.
I'm just making, I'm just trying to get clarity for the residents also, to understand that this isn't gonna disrupt any morning commute, evening commute. We're not gonna be out there at night pounding away in front of someone's house.
Well, we'll have, we'll have issues on Granite Springs Road, because where your line jumps out from the side of the road out to the center of the road, that's gonna require a complete closure. There's no way, no way you're gonna be able to do that.
One of the things that I think, I forgot the name of the gentleman who was here last year, that I asked him if we could do on a daily basis, was to make sure we have the information to go on our website, so that if someone wants to know, or follow the project, where you're gonna be the next day. I think that it's worked well for the, for the two years we've done it. I think it's a smart thing to do, so that people who live here can go, if they, if they, if they know nothing, they'll go on the website, and they'll see where you are, and where you...
We could perhaps do a Nixle alert also, the night before. So, you could plan your day, if we know it the day or two before.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, you've worked with them, and we appreciate what you do, the oversight you give to them, David.
One of the other questions is, when will you be going in front of our firehouse in town here? Approximate date, et cetera?
If we start on this end, it'll be fairly, you know, soon to the start of the project. But, you know, we can coordinate with the fire department there to make sure that we're not gonna be in their way, God forbid there's an emergency or whatnot.
All right.
You know, what we'll do, we'll give the heads up, we're gonna be trenching across the front of there.
Prior to that, we should...
Give them the opportunity to take the trucks out before the day starts.
Yeah, prior to that, we should probably have another, for another work session with at least a couple of the fire commissioners, so that they can, they can get that solidified with you guys.
Okay.
That's also plastic pipe, though, coming down that way, correct?
This is, yes.
That whole, that whole, that whole leg is...
It is all plastic, right? So, how long do you...
Much quicker than...
How long do you anticipate this whole thing takes? For the, for the plastic pipe coming through the middle of town?
This is probably a six-month project.
Six months.
I think we may also wanna contact Bosse's, because their bus route, which is supposed to go out on Greenwood anyway,
Well, they're good, they notify the school districts.
Right.
They notify the school district as to where they're gonna be.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I think it would be who of us to talk to Bosse's about the actual approved bus plan, because they're not supposed to come through the center of town. And the center of town's gonna be, gonna be hard to get through, without a doubt, if all those buses are coming through.
You know, the northbound traffic, how far from the edge? Because this is not, the hopper line will be used up for your construction work. How about the big, big truck comes, you know, 18-wheeler like that?
Yeah, I mean, we, there's been provisions, like we did on Gomer Street. We allowed, you know, we would stop to let the school buses through, with tractor trailers or whatnot. So, you know, although we'll be taking up most of the roadway, it's not a complete shutdown by any means.
If you can, just explain to the public why the plastic pipe goes a little bit quicker than does the steel pipe?
It's just, you know, it's a lot quicker for us to fuse the plastic pipe together, as it is to the steel, as opposed to welding the steel pipe. It's easier to handle, it's lighter, we can fuse a few lengths together to move it around, as opposed to only being able to deal with, say, two lengths of steel pipe at a time.
So, that's why you were quicker on Broad Street than you have been on any other...
That's exactly why.
Cleaner job.
So, the lifespan of the plastic, you know, how long?
They say 100 years.
Oh, I'm not...
We all be around.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. Dave, now, is the same, same plan still in effect for paving curb to curb as...
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna continue to do as we've been doing the last few years.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Well, that's good, you know?
Okay, so I'll wanna make sure that, you know, you let us know when you wanna start.
Yep.
Get you squared away. This is a town board permit, okay? I'm the boots on the ground, so to speak, but the town board will issue the permit, and I assume you wanna start come April 1st.
Yeah.
We got a lot of things to enable first.
Yes, we have a lot of things happen to enable first.
Were you able to work out a fee with them last year?
We, with respect to a fee, what we discussed was we're getting the roads paved curb to curb. That's about 100 and, well, to give you an idea, Quinlan was 6,200 feet, which is just a hair over a mile. It cost 240,000, $43,000, and $56,000 for the milling, so about $300,000 a mile.
Well, they also did an excellent job on Gomer Street, so...
It'll be, it'll be hectic coming through town.
Yeah. Progress does that.
You know, and my concern with Route 35 is that we put any undue stress on Alex Mills Road.
Right.
You know? We may have to, we may have to do a temporary, you know?
That's a cut through, yeah.
Yeah, it's, they get enough as it is.
So, that's what I was saying earlier, is, you know, with where you're talking about, is if there's gonna be an additional need for our police department, I just wanna make sure that they're being properly compensated.
Also wasn't...
You're doing, you're doing two police officers, is my understanding, but if we're gonna be detouring people through town...
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had an issue when we needed another officer.
Okay.
But, but...
It's not about getting another officer, it's making sure that the rate also...
Well, so much the rate, but hadn't there been some discussion regarding administrative fees with respect to, you know, right now, the officers are getting X amount of dollars? It was a discussion regarding $5 or $6 an hour that would be put towards the administration of, of those officers, whoever has to schedule them, and, you know, the...
It was something that was raised, I don't know...
So, just so you have that, you know, in the back of your mind, that, you know, that we're looking at something in term, what our concern is? Our major concern, and, you know, Pat, our controller, was great at it when we first started this, when she, you know, actually realized, you know, if we were paying so much an hour, we weren't covering, you know, the pension obligations and what have you. So, that being said, you know, we wanna make sure our taxpayers aren't putting, getting put on the hook for any of this money, either, you know, intentionally or unintentionally, or directly or indirectly. So, that being said, you know, we're, supervisor and I now are working on some, some options with respect to what we think that would be the cost associated with putting these officers on the job, besides paying them.
I don't think we're talking in exorbitant amounts.
No, I'm saying $5 or $6 an hour, it's, you know, it's not a big deal, no.
Again, that's not something that you need to commit to now, we have a conversation about it, we can...
Just, I just wanna put it on your radar.
Yeah, exactly what we're trying to do.
And would it be with you, or?
Yeah, it'll be the two.
Matt and I.
With the police department directly, so?
Right, I think it would be, you know, us and the chief, I think, would be part of that conversation.
Because I don't know where our agreements are in place at this point.
Okay.
I have to go back and...
Well, if we're gonna start April 1st, yeah, we're gonna start working on that.
Yeah.
All right.
And regardless of those agreements, also, if you need help from our legal team, obviously, Mr. Rodriguez is at your disposal.
Okay. Good. Everybody happy?
As long as you're happy, Dave.
Yeah, I'm happy. Yeah, my phone will be the one ringing, so yes. No, um...
Thank you.
After three years, I think we got it down.
Good, awesome. Okay, next, Mr. Quinn?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Appreciate it. Yeah, can you plug that in for me? My tablet's gonna die. Is Mr. Quinn here? Did he go home?
He was here before.
He was here?
Dave's here.
Probably downstairs, he's...
Anybody from... Mangue Nero, yeah?
He'll see us on TV. Michael, come upstairs, serious.
That's okay.
All right.
Elevator doesn't work.
Yeah, can you give me that?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm Alex, nice to meet you.
There's a, there's a one right behind him.
Where?
Reach up to here.
No. No, we gotta get like an extension cord. Yeah, throw it right down there for me. Okay.
Tom, I brought the plans, do you want me to...
Yeah, that would be great, or for the... So, this is a conversation... Yeah, you wanna sit on this, Adam, jump in? Just not in front of the blue tape box. So, sit right there. Dave's gonna jump in here, too. You guys can... So, this is, again, this is a conversation regarding the Mohican Ave. Retaining wall. And specifically...
There are clips over there, what happens to the...
Yeah, I'm just gonna try to find a board.
Okay, thank you.
So, you have plans here, but I think specifically, we were hoping to have some, some finality to the...
Substitution.
Substitution. There was a study done about the replacement material, so we're really hoping that we can get some finality to that tonight, so that we can hopefully move this forward, and Highway Superintendent Paganelly... How you doing?
Hi, how are you? Good. Good to see you.
Highway Superintendent Paganelly and I are still circling April 1st as a, as a start date.
And contractors don't have a problem with that.
And Remus is good?
So, we're waiting right now, we're waiting on the substitution.
So, this is, this is what we need?
A strong stone for ready rock, and that you've done your due diligence, and it's a suitable substitution.
Correct, and then the other, the other piece of the conversation that doesn't involve...
Mangue Nero.
Mangue Nero, well, I mean, it will eventually, but is the stormwater retrofits?
Correct.
That we want to ensure are part of the project?
Right.
That will help Mohican Lake? I know that's something that Ken Belfer had requested last year.
Yes.
And I just wanna make sure that we are crystal clear that that is in fact part of the overall project.
Can we see the study?
Oh, here, can you just use this mic, use this microphone right here for me? Thank you.
The study basically is a review of all the documents, and we give the approval or reject. Based on all the calculations, all the submissions from the contractor to the town, and vice versa, we review the comments from the town, the calculations from the engineer for the substitution. And we found everything is in order. It's a little bit bigger, the footprint of the, of the wall, but it's, everything is in order. It meets all the codes, your state's gold codes, and we don't have any objection of the substitution.
What is the difference with, is there any change in the stone, structure, material, anything else?
That's exactly what it is.
Right, so the main difference is the original wall designed was solid concrete blocks. The contractor proposed a hollow block that will be filled in with drainage stone. He also offered a credit to the town for making this change, which was gonna help pay for some of the drainage improvements that we wanted to do. So, we asked Mangue Nero to do the technical review, review all the calculations. The contractor has his supplier, the documents that they submitted with all the calculations, signed and sealed by a licensed professional engineer. So, the contractor, you know, is taking that responsibility. These professionals have done an exhaustive review, and they're basically concluding, and we just heard about this earlier today, so this is like new news, that they do consider this, you know, a product that they're willing to approve.
Now, you're the one that brought in Mangue Nero, correct?
Well, the town board selected them to do the design work in 2016.
Well, you and I recommended them.
We did. And we also hired them to do the review here, to do the oversight and the review.
Okay, so this was supposed to start basically...
Last year.
A year ago?
Yeah.
Okay. Why the substitution?
Why? Have we ever gotten an answer as to why the substitution?
And the only thing I can attribute it to, not to, not to interrupt you, Dave...
Go ahead.
Is that the product could be more readily available?
That was initially one of the, the things that were brought up, that the ready rock would be longer in manufacture, and that was to expedite the project getting done last year during the summer?
Correct.
When the children wouldn't be taking their school buses over the mountain.
Correct, and now here we are, a year later.
And here we are, a year later, yes.
And we've been asking for this report for six months minimum. Never seen it, until, we say, I guess it's here now.
Didn't have one.
Huh?
Didn't have one.
Oh.
We actually have, he's bringing, like, he came to bring the results. We don't, we haven't, they have not given us the results of their investigation.
So, once again, why the substitution? I tell you, in my view, we've had a year now for them to produce this rock, if we were gonna use the ready rock. It should be able to be placed in place as per the, as per the original document.
Can you, can you explain to us, do you happen to know why the substitution in material?
I think they wanted to save that credit that they are offering to the town.
They wanna save the, what, can you explain that to me more?
There's a credit they are offering to the town, the contractor is offering.
So, and that credit is for how much, Mr. Quinn?
$18,000.
So, they wanna switch it to give us $18,000, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
What they told us, and I'm gonna try to remember this, at the time that the RFP bid, whatever it was, was, was accepted, was that it would take longer to get the blocks.
Correct.
Than it would...
That is true.
With the ready rock, am I correct?
Yes.
And the, and the ready rock would save money.
Right. They could have had the blocks by a year.
The strong stone would save money.
Strong stone would save money.
Right, the ready rock was the one that was gonna take longer. But to Tom's point, it's, or a year later.
We should have had it ordered, it should have been sitting up on the hill.
I understand, but I wanna, I wanna, okay.
I think, I think, if I, and I remember pretty correctly, I believe that the way that the bid specs were written, okay, there was language in there that sort of opened this door to a suitable substitution.
There has to be, that's the law.
So, that sort of opened the door to, and the door should have been shut at that time, and just said, "No, let's use what we're going, what, what the specs call for." But then, there was concern at the time that that would put us in a legal situation with respect to not honoring the verbiage in the contract.
You know, generally, when a vendor submits the substitution, he has, he submits that, that, that study or whatever he has with the bid.
Now, they're paying for the study. The contractor is paying for the study, this is not coming from the taxpayers. But, the point is, and I'm not really that happy about it, because it took me five years to get the money part of it, which I thought a million dollars was the hard part, but apparently, it's not, it's not.
No.
All right, so, but here's, here's the bottom. It's out of everyone's system, right? We're all very frustrated, to say the least, about the status of the project. But at the end of the day, we have a report that's been produced, that tells us that the strong stone is in fact a suitable substitution for ready rock. So, the question now becomes, and I direct this to you, Dave, because you've been running point on this, and I appreciate all your efforts. So, are we, and my understanding is Remus is ready to go?
Yesterday.
They're locked and loaded, they're ready, ready to do this. So, what's the next step here?
Starting. I think we reach out to Remus, we tell them that we're ready to move forward, and let them start, you know, doing their groundwork and get ready.
Now, we are accepting, and have you read this?
And I remember when we first discussed this, the strong stone versus the ready rock down in Mike's office. And there were, there was a discussion with respect to the strong stone having better drainage capabilities, because we had water issues up there.
That's right.
Correct? And the strong stone had, because it's a porous with gravel in between, it had more capability of drainage benefits, as opposed to ready rock, which would back all that water up.
Mr. Quinn, are you comfortable with the material substitution?
Yes.
Have you read the report?
Well, I haven't, no, because we have not gotten the report from Mangue Nero. The documents that were submitted...
Oh, Mr. Quinn, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, we asked the contractor to submit it to us, that's the right channel, and then we will respond with that report to them, and copy, of course.
And when, so when can we expect to physically see the report?
One day after we get the submitted from the contractor.
If I give you a little bit of background there, so the contractor submitted a package of drawings and calculations. That's what those guys just completed their review today or yesterday. They're saying that the material itself is acceptable. They asked the contractor to give him the cost backup, about verifying the $18,000 credit. It actually came about an hour ago, I know you haven't seen it yet, but, so he has provided that information. They need another 24 hours to tidy up whether the credit is appropriate for the, for the materials. And then we'll be ready to work with Remus to get the work scheduled and started.
So then...
And they're very anxious to start the work.
So then, is it feasible for my office to have a conference call with Remus Friday at 9 o'clock in the morning, with all the information you've been provided, telling them that they can move forward with this new material substitution?
That is an issue that's got to go forward. In her file, as a clerk's file for years to come, there may be other clerks, other boards within the next couple of years, and if something happens, we want to make sure that they're able to see what you concluded was.
Well, yeah, that's the thing, I want the report before we Diana, what do you need from your standpoint to put a final, to put a bow on this thing for us to move forward?
Well, for me, I need obviously copy the report to put into the big folder with that.
Yeah, we all do, yeah.
And as long as the town board is, you know, authorizing that, that's all I would need for mine.
But Mike will be responsible for checking the specs and paperwork, right? You will give him the paperwork, agreed, and it's done?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I'm usually the point of contact for Mangue Nero, so I'll make sure that everybody, every board member and Diana get copies. Dave? Of course.
Michael, did we ever accept the bid?
The bid was officially awarded, you know, last summer. The bid was awarded.
I believe it was awarded in April.
No, the bid was, the bid was awarded, Diana, correct, the bid was awarded? So that, and, which was Remus? And then Remus submitted a substitution change for the material, and we've been, we've been jockeying back and forth ever since to figure out the right way to move forward. And then, once we had the right way to move forward, waiting for the study to be procured. Now that the study's been procured, it confirms the fact, again, what you're telling us, because we haven't seen it, it confirms the fact that the, that the material substitution is an acceptable substitution. So then we should, in theory, be able to go back to Remus, have a conversation with them, have a conversation with them, tell them to continue, or, I'm sorry, to begin, that's clear, to begin, using the strong stone material substitution.
But that's only after we got
And just, just for clarity, all right, there is no way I was going to allow detours over the mountain in Mohegan in the middle of the winter.
No.
So this, you know, even if this had come to us, you know, once that opportunity passed, this is a 10 to 14 week job, once the opportunity had passed that I would have to be detouring Lincoln buses over that mountain, you know, I was adamantly against that.
Yeah, we have
So I held it up a good five, six months myself.
We have some Mohegan parents here.
For safety reasons, absolutely.
For safety reasons. So, are there, Mike, you're the only one, I guess, who can answer the question. I mean, Dave, if you feel comfortable, but you are confident that the substitution change is acceptable?
Yes. I mean, I've done, I've done some investigation, I wanted these professionals to give us the final sign off, which they're now doing. I'm totally comfortable. The contractor has started to work, by the way, I mean, the trees have come down, they did the geotech study, they did some soil borings, we moved, relocated some utility poles with the help of Verizon. So, there, there has been some preliminary work done in order to get to this point, which has obviously taken too long, but we are ready to start physical construction of the wall, which is our next step.
Councilman Diana, what are, I know you have a lot of questions. Are you comfortable at this point?
No, I don't like the product, personally. The product, I shouldn't say I don't like the product, product looks like a nice surfaced face stone, okay? But it actually does come in about 40% cheaper than does the ready rock.
That's correct.
Ready rock. We're getting 18%, eighteen thousand dollars back, I'm sorry, not 18%, eighteen thousand dollars back to do a little bit of drainage that the town is providing the drainage stuff for, am I right, Dave?
Yeah, depending on, yes, the road's going to be open, so we may as well do the drainage then.
Right.
Well, that's, that's another conversation, I think, that we need to
I missed that, what did
The road's going to be open, so Ken had sent some possible, I think, 11 or 12 catch basins that you wanted to do around the lake, correct? Am I
That was the retrofit, existing
This is the stormwater retrofits, and we wanted to, and we wanted to make sure we're installed.
Plus the farm drain.
And it was a farm drain, it was, so it was a stormwater retrofits and the farm drain. And, I mean, I want to make sure that this is part of the actual project, I don't want to, I don't want a question mark about it.
Rather than retrofit a farm drain, I'd rather just put a catch basin.
And we're talking minimal cost, this is a million dollar project and
Catch basin is $385.
Three, well, and Ken Belfer, who's here on behalf of the Mohegan Lake Improvement District, we were looking at, what, fifteen thousand max? I think it was more like twelve thousand dollars. So out of a million dollar project, for us to add on twelve thousand dollars to do the right thing for the lake, I mean, this is a no-brainer.
I agree.
Look, I'm, I'm fine with, as long as it doesn't hold up the project anymore.
There's no doubt about it.
I agree with Tom that probably the ready rock was the original stone of choice by the engineers. That was their go-to, okay, when these plans were drawn up. My, I tend to be a skeptic, my feeling is somebody's trying to switch something up on you, they're saving a lot more money than they're giving you back.
Absolutely are.
And that's just, you know, my takeaway.
Can you give us some insight about the, the cost of the material?
That's why we asked, because we didn't find
So we still don't have that answer?
Yeah.
That, that's what the contractor provided an hour ago. They had asked them, I think, yesterday for some cost backup on how they got eighteen thousand dollar credit.
So have you, have you read this document? I know you only got it an hour ago, but it's new information?
Yeah, but I think that what
What did the document say?
To do
But what did the, what did the document say?
Well, they say that the material, the block cost is a little bit less, but the stone, to fill in the, the stone, you know, takes up some of that cost. So their eighteen thousand dollar savings comes from the labor, because they're going to be able to put more block, they're going to be able to do the job quicker, which was one of the side benefits. By doing the job quicker, they can save on the labor costs. So essentially, they're saying that the material costs are about a wash, according to this, this backup that they provided, that these guys were going to, I think, talk to the manufacturers themselves to confirm the prices that he's using. So I think that's very appropriate for them to do that, and, you know, we'll, we'll look for their guidance on how much credit. If we do a larger credit, then we need to have another conversation with Remus.
So his study is still ongoing at this point?
Well, the, the last element is the credit cost.
I got it, I got it.
Anyway, but the replacement material is as good as or better, right?
Yeah, I just, I just
That's what he said.
I think that, I think that you're fine with what you've accomplished.
I think what the board, and myself and Mike will have to be comfortable with is the term suitable substitution. If indeed this wall was planned based on a ready rock product, and we're using a strong stone, which is different in terms of its integrity, that, you know, it gives me a little pause for concern, you know? I mean, what is a suitable substitution? What's the best product we could use if there were no questions? I mean, would you say ready rock is the best product, or they're dead equal, or, you know? I mean, your guys are engineers, this is what you know, so I defer to your judgment.
Yeah, well, the, it's, the, the Yeah, it's a good substitution, but of course, the ready rock is a solid block. In terms of stability, it's a little bit more feasible, but the other one compensate that with a bigger footprint. So in terms of
So the wall will have a larger footprint?
Yeah.
The stone itself is bigger on the strong stone, per stone than the ready rock.
Okay.
So there are less joints, and it's a bigger, it's a bigger footprint of the stone itself,
Okay.
which means it's, it's a bigger stone, and you're cantilevering up a wall, that, you know, the better, larger sized stone is a better scenario, but
And then how about the expansion coefficient, winter, thinking in summertime getting bigger? Is there any crack develop or anything with this material?
No.
So I think at this point, my thought would be, we call Remus tomorrow. We say, we, if, if the board is of the mindset that they want to go with the original plan, the ready rock, we say, how, how is that going to affect this project at this point, right now? Because if we get into the summer, project's not going to get done again for another year.
Yeah, but the question, the other question, though, is if they, do they have the ready rock material?
That's what I want to ask them. How long to get the ready rock versus how long to, same discussion we had a year ago, almost to the day.
It was the same thing we had with Baldwin Road, remember?
Yeah.
Didn't we start sending the highway department up to get the stone? Because they said they couldn't get it all of a sudden?
Yep.
And then, we said, wait a minute, we have trucks, we have trailers.
Baptist Church Road, yeah.
Or, what did I say, Baptist Church Road?
Yes.
Alice, just to give you an idea what this stone looks like, I had it here. Just to kind of give everybody
I think Tom brought up the point the first time around, that this stone being hollow is actually going, and you have the water that'll drain through it, actually is troublesome about the corrosion of the salt. So instead of having something eat from the outside in, you'll have salt corrosion outside in, inside out. And he's concerned about the life of the product over, you know, over the time of
Now, what do you say to that?
We don't have any information about that, but I see, good point.
I know Tom brought that up from day one, as being part of his issue with
Michael, mechanical
Simple enough, if we want, if we want to go with the ready rock, go with it, and then, then take the hit on how long it takes to do it. Simple, because it's easy to make suggestions. I've been fighting this fight for over a year now, that's right.
No, I hear you, I'm just I'm just hoping that the, you know
Well, ready rock will not be ready, you don't have to hope. Ready rock will take longer than strong stone.
That's my concern, but that's my concern right now.
Right, that's the bottom line, there's no fuzzy map there. Ready rock has to be ordered and made to order. Strong stone is a product that is in, in stock. So if you want to take a chance of letting this thing go another year, so be it.
That's not, that's not the intention. Dave, that's not the intention, not what we're saying.
But I share Dave's concern. And, and the concern is that we can either move this project forward with a substitution material that, according to your study, because we don't have the report, but according to your study is in fact suitable, or you're going to roll the dice again
Right.
And hope, and frankly, hope that we're going to be able to meet a timeline that they haven't been able to meet yet.
Well, I think, well, to your point, that's why, you know what? All this conversation has sort of moved, because we call, right, I don't see why phone calls can't be made.
Well, ready rock, see, they got what we need.
Call Remus up tomorrow and say, hey, you could start next week, when can you get the ready rock? Simple, and then we all have our answers.
Well, his point was he could get the ready rock a lot faster.
No, he could get the strong stone faster. But that was a point from a year ago.
No, he told us he could get the ready rock faster.
No, not strong stone.
Well, he says the stone strong is available now. The ready rock
Now it's available.
Yeah, now the ready rock, Dave, first of all, they have to do the calculations and the drawings before they're going to release for fabrication. So, so it's a process to get the stone made.
More delays, more process, I mean, it's, it's almost, it's
The original drawings, the, the original drawings, though, were for ready rock, right? So there are no drawings that have to be done, let's make that clear.
Because it was a public bid, it says ready rock is the manufacturer or equal.
Or equal.
Now, again, a substitution is not an equal, all right? A substitution is the same product, different brand. They submitted an actual substitution because it's a different type of block. And that's why we wanted these folks to do the review. It's why the contractor actually has to pay the cost for this review that was done. The town doesn't have to bear that cost.
I'm happy he did the review, because your company was the company that did the design of the bridge, of the wall, as well as the bid documents, correct?
Correct. We feel the same way. Unresponsible party to give us a wall that's going to last for 75-plus years.
Well, the only concern I would have is that if it was an equal substitute, wouldn't they have known that rather quickly?
You know, the mechanical integrity is key, and I want you to figure out, both of you, then I'll buy it, okay? No problem.
From when they were first tasked with this, which was in January?
It was fairly, fairly recently.
Right. They have relatively quickly, thirty, I think thirty-eight man-hours to identify this as a suitable substitute. You know, I don't know, maybe they weren't working on it.
No, 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 I, 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 I thought that we would have gone to them earlier, I'm sorry.
Unfortunately, this has been convoluted.
No, here, I, I, I actually agree with Dave, I do. I think we call Remus, if they can start with ready rock April 1, it's ready rock. If they can't do it by April 1, then you go with the strong stone.
Let's hope they're not watching tonight.
Assuming the, well, then they, then they can know.
They know what they
They can know what the phone call is, but let's, let's put an end to this, enough. It's analysis paralysis, it's not getting done, we're kicking them down the road again, enough. If they can do it by April 1 with ready rock, it goes with April 1 with ready rock. If they can't get the ready rock in place, and we get the, and we actually get the report, and I'm not doubting that we're not, we have the report that says that this is a suitable substitution, then go with a suitable substitution. I mean, it, it, that's simple.
I have a question for Adam then. If indeed, in the contract, it said, you know, or a suitable substitution, and now we've got an engineering firm that says this is a suitable substitution, where are we in legal, you know, limbo with respect to, now we say, well, yeah, you paid for the study, but even though they said it's a suitable substitution, we don't want you to use it?
I'd rather not have to make that argument.
Right, I mean, that's, I think that's pretty, pretty self-evident.
Then, then if that's the case, then the safest play would be to go with the, the strong stone, which is readily accessible, a suitable substitution, it doesn't put us in any legal
Mumble jump on.
Yeah, I think the only thing that might change that would be if they said, hey, it's worth a fifty thousand dollar credit.
Right, exactly.
Then we have the right to go back to Remus and say, either give us a fifty thousand dollar credit or give us a ready rock wall.
That would be our defendable position.
But
Which we should, which they sent the email now an hour and a half ago.
Yes.
So you should be able to complete that in the next 24 hours. So we should still have, we should still be able to, on Friday, have a conversation with Remus, one way or the other, and know what we're doing.
Yes.
Let's bring them in.
I'm going for it, no problem with me.
Bring them in, and let's get it squared away, get it sorted.
Supers, I'll set that meeting up.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else from the board on the, on the matter? And as a, one more, just as a, again, that, I do want to just thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do want to just, one more time, reemphasize, Mr. Quinn, that the stormwater retrofits and the, and the drainage
Yeah, I already, I mean, Dave and I talked
They are going to be, they are going to be part of the project, correct?
We, we understand that, yes, we understand, yes.
Yes. We have a firm commitment that they are going to be a part of the project.
Well, we have to work with the contractor, we have to, we're adding this scope of work, so we have to work out the details.
Whether we add it to the end or the beginning, it shouldn't matter. It's twelve thousand dollars out of a million dollar project, and if we're getting an eighteen thousand dollar credit, it sounds like it paid for itself. Right?
Well, we, Dave and I were work, originally working with the contractor on another drain, we wanted to add some more catch basins along that road. Right now, the water, the road
Falls in the center, and that's the farm
Or runs off the, over the top of the wall and runs down. So we did speak to the contractor about using the credit to add some more basins. And now, when we're going to put in these retrofits, we would have to add those three basins to the retrofit list. And they're roughly fifteen hundred dollars apiece. We do have an addition, we have an additional work allowance in the contract already, so we'll, we'll get that done, I mean, we know what the charge is, and
That, that road is a major drainage issue, you know?
Right, but that's our whole point, though, is if we're already, if we're already doing work there, let's just put the infrastructure we need there to fix it.
We should. Right now, the pitch of the road, we're getting the road resurfaced when it's done, and we were talking to the contractor about maybe trying to pitch the road the right way so we can solve some of these longstanding drainage issues that were
Perfect.
So, so that's what we're working on.
Perfect.
So we'll, if, it's okay, I'll report back to how we're making the drainage fixes, but we don't have all those details worked out today.
As long as, again, it's part of the, when they go in, it's part of the project going in, I don't want it added on at the end, after everything's done, we have the road open, let's go do the work that we need to do to do it right.
I, I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt, we've got some Mohegan moms and dads sitting here. Tell us, tell them exactly what's going to happen.
Based off of this current conversation?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Nothing, so No, so what we're doing, so Fri, so we're going to do, you, they're going to do the cost analysis, tell us if the eighteen thousand dollar credit is acceptable. Once they confirm whether or not it's less or more, we're going to have a conversation with Remus, and if they can, if they can start April
Hopefully by Friday.
Yep, hopefully by Friday. If they can start April 1 with the ready rock, they start April 1 with the ready rock, assuming that it meets the qualifications and we don't put ourselves in a legal bind. If not, then they start ready, ready, they start April 1 with the strong stone, and that's, and that's the goal, is April 1, we're going to work on this thing. One way or the other, I mean, that's enough.
Okay, moms, that's April 1.
Thank you so much for your time, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mike, when the report comes out, could you share that with us?
I will, yes.
Thank you.
No, but you know, really
Okay, moving forward. Now we're horribly behind. Mr. Quinn, I think you're up here the rest of the night, it looks like, just till the end.
Yep.
We have a number of requests for permit out of your office, starting with the Westchester modular.
I think there's an applicant here, I'll
An applicant here?
Yeah, he's coming up.
How are you?
Hi, I'm Tony.
Hey, Tony, how are you? Thanks for joining us tonight, appreciate it.
I'm the engineer for Westchester modular.
Okay.
Tell what the modular is for, and what
Okay, so the owner of the parcel, this is a vacant lot on Madison Court, right off of 202.
Nope, you're good. Just watch out for those two blue tabs, you're good.
So they're proposing a new single-family home to be constructed on a vacant lot. There's existing water, existing sewer on the street, and because it's a large house, large excavation for the basement, once they exceed more than 200 cubic yards of land disturbance, it becomes a town board action. And so that's why they're here tonight, asking for approval for a town board-issued stormwater permit. There is no wetlands involved here, so the permit request is for a stormwater management permit and for tree removal.
How far from the street? In the middle or bottom or...
Bottom, first, this is the first house on the left-hand side. If you ever drive by there, like, on the right-hand side, there's another house that's just being finished up. I think they just got their CVO last week or something.
Matt, I'm gonna give you my, my bad answer concern with this. Is that, did you send this out to conservation?
I did not.
That's always my, my, my bad answer to you because Diana and I did, I did it a little different when I was the clerk. Your office would get it, but then send it to my office so that the board would get it. And then it would go right to any other affected department or volunteer board. And I spoke with the members of conservation, and they said they do want to see copies of stormwater permits. And I think we should adhere to their, their request.
I mean, I, as a town engineer, wouldn't typically refer something there, but that's certainly, I have no problem doing that. I just think that usually in the past, I always understood the town board would make those type of referrals. If you want me as a matter of course to just forward that to them, I'm happy to do that, but that's not something that I've done before.
Well, quite frankly, what you're doing now is wasn't done before either. What would happen is that it would go to the clerk, and I, as the clerk, would send it to the board and say to the board, I'm putting this on the next agenda for referral.
And, and we were doing that, I think we could continue doing that. This application came in because they originally thought that they could get an administrative permit, which is something that the town engineer would issue.
I understand that, I understand.
That's how it came in. We did a technical review, we said, no, this has to be a town board permit because of the excavation involved. They paid the balance of the fee. When we got that, we then forwarded it to be put on the next board agenda.
But the planning board, I'm sure they have, say, plan approval, planning boards already looked at it?
I mean, this would not typically, this is not something that would be typically under the jurisdiction of the planning board.
I used to let them look at everything.
That's, that's fine, but it's not required, that's all I'm saying.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay.
So it's just an as-of-right use with 200-plus yards of excavation material?
By the time you excavate for the foundation and then take that, I tried to design it so that there's no off-site trucking.
Right.
I don't want trucks leaving with their, so whatever we dig out, we're gonna put around the house, so you're handling the same, the excavation by itself is less than 200 yards, but then you take that material and spread it around, it comes out to be about 300 when you're all done. So it triggers the 200, and we had to come to the town board for, but there's no magic, it's just, that's it.
So, I mean, I want to say that we got this application in mid-January, and we wrote a memo on the 21st, and they quickly got everything back to us. I mean, this is, you know, something that we turned around relatively quickly, but if the board wants to do referrals, that's fine, I mean, but I just didn't think that was something that I would be doing without direction from the board.
I don't think it's something that we really need to do at this point in time for just that particular phase, so that they could get started, and then if there's, you know, a stormwater issue, then we deal with that. Am I correct on that, on that note?
I'm gonna disagree with you. I'm gonna disagree. I think the, I went to conservation board and said, isn't this what you normally would be reviewing? And they said, yes, but we have gotten none. And I said, from now on, you will get them. So, you know, whether or not you, you don't want to do it, or, again, when I worked on it, it all went out in one day. I don't know.
In the past, and what we've always done, is once it reaches the level past his authority and it goes to the town board, he should be giving the application and stuff to the town clerk's office. Then we request that the board, we give that information to the board, the board then puts it on a work session, and then from there, they decide to refer it out. It should be going to the conservation board and some of your other boards, and just as a matter of comment. So...
Again, I have completely no issue with that.
That has not been happening, and that seems to be the in-between here.
I understood, Supervisor, that the work session, the only, we were doing that until the last month or two, because work session items, we understood, went to your secretary's. So that's where we were forwarding, this is a work session, right? So, so town board-issued permits could handle that work session. So we easily could have forwarded this entire package, just tell us where to send them.
Town board-issued permits should come to the town clerk's office, that's always been the practice, always been the practice.
Until we understood that we had to bring them to the work session.
Decide that it's above your threshold, it should come to the town clerk's office to be referred to the town board.
I think if we refer to...
But total is 100 yards, right?
You know, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to...
Total only is 100 yards.
I don't want to make this a work here.
It's about 300. And once you get over 200...
But I do want that, if our volunteer boards say we should be getting it, then they should be getting it.
If there were questions on the process, we meet weekly. We've been meeting weekly since my first week here.
Right.
You had ample time to raise questions.
I wasn't even aware this was a question.
We spoke last year about this, Michael.
I don't recall speaking about this directly. The board has gone back, every time the board has had different philosophies about whether they want to refer these out to volunteer boards or they don't. I just need that direction. If the board is changing what the past practice was, that's fine, but I have to understand that direction.
And again, you, you had ample time to get that clarification if you were asking for it, other than a town board work session with an applicant in front of us that were now wasting his time. That's my concern, and that's my frustration, is we meet weekly, so if there were questions...
I didn't have a question, but, okay.
How do you guys want to handle this?
Well, I don't want to put you through any more trouble than, than what you have been.
Appreciate that.
Because I, I understand, time is money.
Well, we make it from this point forward, then it goes out to the...
Well, let me ask you a question.
Volunteer boards.
Are you gonna try to get in the ground now, the foundation, or do you have to wait a little bit?
I think the house may already be constructed in factory, it's starting to go down the line, so I think they were hoping that they could get this definitely in fairly quickly.
And when is the next conservation?
Do you know when the next conservation board meeting is, Diana?
Is it the second Wednesday?
Second Wednesday.
Yeah, the second Wednesday.
So you'd be pushing him off for like another month?
You know what, let's, you know what, let's do what's on our agenda.
Yep.
And beginning with the next agenda, I don't want to hold this memo.
I don't want to delay either.
You know, you can communicate with the supervisor's office, or maybe, you know, if anything else to be done, then...
No, I don't want, I don't want to hold either one or two up, because he's got another one.
I've worked very well with Mike in the past, so...
That's fine.
Whatever he asks for, I try to turn it around and get it back.
No, we appreciate it, and so we don't want you to get caught up in bureaucracy when you have, you know, like Alice said, time's money.
Are you okay with what he's done now, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we did a technical review, we have no comments on the submitted documents, we prepared recommended conditions.
So you want to give it to us for next week to approve?
Yeah, I think it should be at the next, I think, the process that we should follow for this particular case is for us to go review these, and then if we're amendable, we'll put them on next week's town board agenda, Diana, to approve the permit, so you'll have your permit next week.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I appreciate everything you're doing. If you need this, it doesn't have my seal on it, but if you need an extra copy, more than...
We can get it from the engineer's office.
We have copies, thank you.
If you need more, let me know.
All right, I will.
I'll get it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Take care.
All the best. Next, we have...
Old Logging Road.
No, Old Logging Road?
Oh, yeah.
Old Logging Road? Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Please, use whatever you want.
Thank you for bringing a board and everything.
Good to see you.
My pleasure.
Okay, Old Logging Road, what is the...
Do we have a mic?
Yeah.
This application is for a dredging of a pond on a parcel that has a single-family home on it. In order to do this project, which involves scooping out or using, well, I guess they'll describe the process, but they're going to be dredging the pond, and so it requires a stormwater management permit and a wetland permit. So it's more than 200 cubic yards of dredging, so it's a town board action, and on a town board-issued wetland permit, that does require a public hearing. So they are here basically asking tonight, which will walk you through some of the details, but they're gonna ask for a public hearing to be scheduled.
Okay.
How far on the Old Logging Road? Middle or half, all the way up?
It's gonna be a house there.
There is no address here.
1390.
No, how far? Middle?
Geographically, but it's...
Up the road.
Man, it's up.
Part of the road is already washed out, right? Not, you know, paved road.
I don't think it is in front of this property, but I can't tell you either exactly how far up the road it is.
Contractor.
Yeah. By the way, I'm Tracy Shalafou, I'm the landscape architect for the project, Tracy Shalafou LLC. Glad to be here.
Thank you.
All right, Tracy, do you want to describe your project?
Sure, I'm gonna. This is an application, can you hear me, hear me okay through this? Okay. For a diver-assisted suction method pond dredging. The pond is just about a fifth of an acre in size, or about 9,200 square feet, so it's a small pond, probably been there for several decades. To our knowledge, it has never been dredged in the past, so a lot of organics have built up over time, and they are compromising the habitat, and, you know, it's raising the temperature of the water, so it's time to clear this out and to improve the habitat. And this method of dredging is very environmentally sensitive. The method is to create a level pad adjacent to the pond, this would be on the eastern shore, and this level pad on top of it would be situated, a geotextile tube, it's like a large bladder that is porous. And men would wade around the pond with, forgive me, Mark, basically a giant wet vac, and they would suction the water and sediment to this tube. And we wouldn't draw down the level of the pond, so this really protects the animals, we're not dehydrating the pond or de-watering it in any way. And over time, the bladder would fill up, and then the water would seep out through its pores and be directed back into the pond throughout the process. Yes.
So what are you gonna do with the dry material?
So, the, the dry material would be exported from the site to a different town, and the contractor would provide, you know, certification of where it's going and so forth. And the amount of sediment, this is approximate, is 520 cubic yards wet, and after it sits in the bag for a while and de-waters, dries out, it would be approximately just 200 cubic yards. After the dredging is complete, the eastern shore would be restored to the pre-construction grades and re-seeded, so we're not causing any permanent disturbance or grade change here, everything goes back to the way it was. And the homeowner, Ann Hess, is, she's very environmentally minded, she's voluntarily planted a lot of native perennials along this channel, and along the outlet, we saw an opportunity to improve the habitat further by removing some invasive shrubs and replacing with native shrubs, sweet pepper bush and spice bush.
Are there any mechanical, you know, equipment goes there or only the vacuum?
Actually, I'd like to introduce Mark Amler from Pristine Waters, he is the contractor for the job, and he can answer the mechanical questions probably better than I can.
Sure. So, there's no actual mechanical items within the pond body. There's a small priming pump on a small barge, probably about 11 feet long, six feet wide, that primes a bigger pump that sits on land. The bigger pump is approximately six feet wide, it's on a trailer, it's a single-axle trailer, so it looks a lot like, if you've ever seen a large trash pump, tow behind trash pump. Okay? So six feet by 12 feet, maybe in length, weighs probably about 1,000 pounds, if that. So we have a priming barge and air supply. We send a diver in, there's hoses connected, and they literally suck it out, but there is no heavy equipment in the body of the pond.
So, question. This 200 yards or whatever of silt that you've taken out of this pond, how are you getting it out of our town? And what, what kind of vehicles are you gonna be putting on that road that you've obviously been on it, you know what kind of condition it's in? So...
It's a fair question. I will say that I am the dredging contractor, but I do not handle spoils.
Okay.
Speak to this a little bit.
Triaxles?
Yeah, you're talking about two to three triaxles. Yeah, and we have, we have some comments from the actual company that does that. Yeah. So you're looking at three triaxles?
So you're talking under 100 tons? Because a triax only takes 30 tons.
Right.
Okay.
Dave, if I could just add, and I know Alice had this concern, I mean, one of our comments was that Old Logging Road is a narrow unpaved road.
Old Logging Road is paved. I don't know why people just keep saying that. Old Logging Road is paved.
Anyway, we asked for a...
Every part that we own is paved. It is not in wonderful shape, but it is indeed paved.
I'll change that to pave. Well, we asked for a truck management plan, just so we can understand how they're gonna get trucks in and out of the site and out of the area.
Right, it's barely wide enough for two cars. You know, it's a 14-foot wide road.
You know, Councilman Patel asked a question, so I just looked it up on the maps. It is before the, it's close, very close to Hunterbrook Road, it's like before the first turnoff there.
So is it the pond we see from Hunterbrook Road?
No, I don't think so. Here, that's that big pond there.
I have a general question for you, Tracy. Because the town, obviously, we own several lakes, and there are a lot of people, homeowners in Yorktown, that own lakes, and a lot of them are already eutrophied. How often should the average lake be, whatever you call that?
Obvious, dredged, still dredging, yeah.
That's correct.
It really depends upon the conditions that are contributing to the eutrophication, you know, how much forested canopy is around it. I'm gonna, actually, maybe Mark could answer this better, because...
So, so Tracy's right, eutrophication is a natural cycle, it's ongoing. Natural lakes, this happens over many, many, many hundreds or even longer periods of time. Man-made lakes tends to happen quicker because the original depth generally is shallower.
Yeah, that's what we have, man-made.
Right. You know, I would say that there are certain areas of almost every lake within Westchester, Putnam, and Duchess County that need some attention, but there are sections of lakes, not the entire lake necessarily. Beyond that, you know, when we do a project like this, to give you an idea of scope and or timelines, understanding that the scale is way off, right?
Right, right.
I would turn around and say that this lake, or this pond, should probably not need to be touched from a dredging perspective for in excess of 10 to 20 years, probably more like 20, for it to start showing signs of filling in slowly again.
How often are you in Yorktown?
Personally or professionally?
Yeah, I'm just, well, I gotta...
Professionally, I'm in and around the area regularly.
Well, I'm gonna ask you to, if you would stop near Sparkle Lake and look at us, look at it, and tell us what you think.
Okay.
Now, Matt has an office in the town hall, so you can call his office.
Right upstairs.
All right.
Jenna's right there, you can coordinate with her, and we'll take a ride out.
I can do the Mohican leg.
I'd like a professional to tell us.
I think Jim Monstrous.
Jim Monstrous.
Oh, our rec person is right back there.
You can pick him up along the way. His office is right there.
Alice, that's a mega plan.
I'm just asking him to take a look.
Yeah, come on.
And I'm happy to take a look, what I would...
Happy.
I'm happy to take a look. I mean, come on. But business development is, you know, part of what we do. That said, you know, you, what I'll do is I'll turn and give you my experience-driven opinion. What you really want to do is you'd really want to consult with a limnologist, though, long-term. They're the ones who are gonna give you the real science behind everything.
Yeah.
I'll give you my anecdotal perspective.
Perfect.
Diana, help me with Sparkle Lake.
Here.
Just a quick question. I don't know who deals with the homeowner more. Would you, or you would?
Oh, actually, both of us.
Both of you do?
We all work together.
I've been asked to see if the homeowner would be willing to do a dry hydrant for firefighting on their, I don't know if the pond is big enough, not big enough for that.
I don't think that would be an appropriate pond for that.
Okay.
It's not enough water.
We used to do one on Crow Hill Road in the back.
Yeah.
It's about nine thousand square feet, and the average depth is, what, maybe five feet or so? Yeah, we...
You'd suck it dry so fast.
Quickly, a fish wouldn't be too happy.
No, no, no.
The only reason we can do it is because we're returning the water back into the pond as we're going. Our machine actually moves closer to five or six hundred gallons a minute.
Yeah.
So, we would drain it dry too if we weren't returning.
Right.
Is there anything else we need on this application besides a motion to move it for a public hearing?
We did have some technical review comments. We issued a memo. I'm sure you guys have it.
Yes.
I think they're relatively minor in nature, so we would think it's appropriate to schedule that public hearing.
Again, and we're gonna send this over to our conservation department, because you are asking for a wetland permit, and that's one of the agencies that the wetland permit is called to be reviewed by.
Okay.
That was a very large project, now, on the Somme River Road last year at the doctors. It was very nicely done, you know, because the water is draining into the reservoir, you know? They did a good job, yeah. They had all the bags shipped out and, you know...
What do you mean?
Tell Hard, refer it out, and set up for a public hearing.
We can do, yeah, we can run parallel tracks.
One time.
Right.
That's what we need. Diana, what do you have open for a public hearing?
Your referral process is in action. The conservation board needs, correct?
I'm sorry, was it Diana?
No, if you send it to conservation tomorrow, I will call them and tell them to expect it.
Thank you.
As long as you don't have plans for St. Patty's Day, that sounds good.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
March seventeenth is your public hearing.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's, that is for this board. Okay? And conservation falls between now and then, so I'm...
They will call you.
Jenna, can you, can you just get their contact information?
I know we need to do the neighbor notification. There are a few more steps we need to go through. Okay.
And let us know who's bringing the corned beef and cabbage and who's bringing the soda bread, okay?
Yeah, you have to do that since it's March seventeenth.
If you could just, if you could just...
I don't like...
If you could just coordinate with Jenna Bel Castro, she can get you all the information you need, my executive assistant. She's right over here. Okay?
You don't like corned beef?
When's conservation?
What do we say with conservation?
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday of the month.
I don't like cabbage and corned beefs.
Anything more on the...
No, nothing else on that application.
On this applicant?
Neither.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you. T-Town.
Did you give him your card?
Jenna's got my information on that side. T-Town.
T-Town.
Right.
Thanks, Mike.
Sure.
Hello.
Hey, T-Town.
Sorry for being late.
All right. Good to see you guys.
Just watch out for that box there. He's gonna yell at you. Those two blue tabs.
It's gotta be on either side of it.
Either side of the blue tabs, otherwise man behind the wall.
One more line here.
All right.
So, T-Town has been in contact with my office a few times over the last several months. They're planning several projects, and the big project for discussion tonight is they're doing also a dredging of a pond.
A wetland.
A wetland area to be cleaned. So, this is another wetland permit that the town board would issue, requires the public hearing. Due to the amount of material being removed, it's a stormwater management permit and a wetland permit. They're also taking out some trees, so all three are the subject of this.
Is tree, I'm sorry, tree permit is included?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, that's like the big project. They're also planning to do a smaller project to add some herbicides to remove some invasive species from a wetland area. And so, the question for the board is whether, maybe the both activities could be combined into one permit, which would allow them to use some of these funds for their good use in the field. And, you know, one of the things that we were kicking around was whether they might wanna even go to the general permit, where they could just do some of this work over the next couple of years, because they do have a rigorous program that they're looking to do. And obviously, whatever they don't spend on application fees, they could use for programming, so...
That's excellent.
Yeah, we are nonprofit, so the fee structure is a bit, yeah.
I have an eighty-six year old there.
And we wanna come and do a board meeting down at T-Town again this year.
Okay. Yeah, excellent. Yeah, it's a great place to have meetings. You get to go outside during breaks and walk around.
Well, do you have the rafters there?
Yeah, they're there, yeah.
The first time we came there, we got a, we were taught about the rafters.
Raptor, I thought you said ravelers.
No, none of those, none of those.
I thought you said raptors.
We haven't done a lot of...
You're raptors, you're like eagles.
Yeah, not the dinosaur.
Bird and prey, yeah.
Not velociraptors.
I have a question. Which, what area? Do you have anything?
Yeah, so, this is Barbara. So, Barbara's our contractor that we've hired. We got some grant money to actually do this project, so we're on limited funds, but she's gonna present the area.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't have clips because I didn't know.
It's okay, you can just, if you want, you can just put it on the table. It's just gonna be easier for you.
That's what I was hoping. I'm a landscape architect, and for this project, also, we had an engineer contracting with us.
Just throw it right down, it's okay. Knock things over, it's not a problem.
Okay, so we did the school swift. Basically, we're removing point four acres of sediment, and in order...
You have to talk into the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When you're talking away from it.
Okay. And in order to prevent this from continually happening, basically, this is Spring Valley Road, and the topography is going this way towards T-Town Lake. What we're going to do is put in a little sedimentation basin that T-Town will be able to maintain, so that this won't continually happen, because this whole area is sedimenting in pretty severely. So, we're going to be putting in an access construction drive that's going to be, we're going to restore this area also by taking away part of the drive when we're, when we're done. So, this area will be replanted, and there's quite a few pages, this is a swift, et cetera, but it's going to be replanted with primarily with all native plants. And we're going to be using silt socks instead of, which is a very compost filter socks instead of the regular silt fences, which aren't as effective. These are much more effective, and they filter a lot, a lot better. So, anyway, and then we have extensive planting plans.
One of the things Michael said, which I think is very wise, is that you go for a general permit. That way, you can do general maintenance for the next five years without coming before the board.
So, what are the requirements for that compared to just a general permit for a one-time project?
Well, I think the only code difference is that you're supposed to give us like a yearly report. I think we usually meet yearly anyway about the tree projects that you're doing. But I think, I actually took the statement out of the code, just in case anyone asked. But it says that you'll annually review the progress and conditions of the project with the town engineer, who will then recommend to the town board continuance of the general permit.
Okay.
So, I think that might suit you guys really well. It could be up to five years. I think that's, so, it sounds like that would be something that you would like to do.
Yeah, we would, we would really use...
Take that in use, yeah.
We could prepare the documentation accordingly for that.
Okay.
Michael, with respect to access to Spring Valley Road, are they gonna be having a construction, access, and egress onto Spring Valley Road?
Yes.
Another fourteen, fifteen-foot wide road? And is it down by the pond where the boardwalk is? Is that where we're working?
It's down by the pond. Why don't you come and look?
Here's the board, that's, is that...
Here's the visitor center right here.
That's all blind corners there, that's an issue.
Are you talking about the floating boardwalk? Is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
No, it is not by the floating boardwalk. It's closer to the nature center. There's an existing gate where the fence is that has a path, that they're going to extend that road down onto the platform.
Now, what are you gonna, what road are you gonna close off? Or are you gonna close off the road?
No.
We shouldn't need to close any roads, no, because they're gonna be able to pull directly off of Spring Valley into that area and work within our...
Yeah, Spring Valley is up here, right?
Right past the crosswalk.
And here's the visitor center.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good, we'll do, oh, yeah, no.
This project, I mean, just, I know we just talked about two dredging-type stuff projects, but this project is significantly larger than the previous project. What was the number, like five hundred?
It's six hundred cubic yards.
Six hundred yards.
Yeah.
So, you know, if an average dump truck is fifteen yards, is that forty, forty trucks? That would be in and out of here. So, that's just something that we'll have to manage, similar to what we just had on a recommended condition, where we'll help facilitate them, making sure that trucks can get in and out of there without any impact to the neighbors.
Well, I think in the resolution, let's talk about there be language that...
Like a truck management plan?
Yeah, because you know what? The one thing we don't want to do, and I'm sure you don't want to do it, is to stop people from getting to where they've gotta go.
Right. Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's good.
We're gonna make a motion for...
For referral and a public hearing.
We'll get the referral to conservation board as well as public hearing. We'll do them together. So, we'll do the public hearing on the seventeenth. Correct, Diana?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we can do it together. Might as well. We did do, yes, we did vote on the other one as well.
You wanna do it again?
Okay. All set?
All right, we'll see you.
Thank you very much.
Do you, do you need this?
We have them on file. We also forward up to the town board.
Okay, and the filter...
Do you want a printed copy, Alice?
You forwarded this application to the town board?
We did. And you have it.
It may be upstairs in my box, so I'll go get it in my box.
Louise, please.
But we have a copy to send to conservation. Can we keep this?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't see anything in our boxes earlier. Nothing in our boxes earlier today.
Is it second project?
It's the wetland with the herbicide, so I don't know if we need to talk about that also, or if...
Well, that's wetland with the...
That's in a different area, but was...
We couldn't include that.
I thought we were including it all in a general permit.
Right, all in one.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, as long as it's clear, it's clear. I just wanted to make sure.
Correct.
Please communicate with our town engineer.
Okay, thank you.
It's all in one.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And obviously, Mr. Kim, we're gonna have to have a conversation about procedure moving forward.
Okay.
Okay.
Par three.
Jimmy.
Par three.
I'm gonna learn how to play golf there.
Not this year.
Little Charlie and I are gonna learn together.
There you go. All right, par three.
Hey. I'm only fifteen minutes behind schedule.
We're doing all right. Doing all right. I noticed. Mr. Murphy, not, not, no.
Got it next to me.
Okay.
Board members, how's everybody?
So, this is, this is in regards to the par three golf course. This is the, almost at this point, a bi-weekly status update, and I know that, once again, that Jim and Joe have been very hands-on, and Mike as well, which we appreciate. I know you're in front of the planning board on...
But Joe has been there for hours.
Yesterday?
Oh, yeah.
Joe has been there forever on this side.
So, I just wanted to thank all the fellow department heads that have been helping me with this project, you know, Mike Quinn, John Taggert, and John Landy.
That's great.
And of course, Dave Paganelli.
Yep.
Just to update you on kind of the Mike Quinn side of things here while I have him here, we had the violation citing from DEC. We have since done everything they wanted. The last email was sent literally this morning with what they wanted to see, which was a wetlands map by the erosion control enforcement.
What did we violate? What did we do?
They didn't get, they didn't get the proper permitting from the state.
That is correct.
You know, I think when we're talking, and you're talking, the public is listening to you, they kinda wanna know what you did, what we did, or didn't do.
So, what we did, we've been updating this as we've gone. Bottom line is, we didn't get the proper permitting in place before the project started, and so, we scrambled earlier this year to put Mr. Quinn, Jimmy, John Taggert, John Landy, basically anyone who had a stake in this thing together, to put a process together to get RC REC through the bureaucracy as fast as we can to get them their permitting re-secured, to make sure all their paperwork is in order.
Now, thankfully, we were under about, under an acre of disturbance, which is under the purview of the law and what we're able to do. So, you know, we were kind of at that, you know, level of going past that, so before we did, we were able to get this permitting.
That's perfect, though. We didn't totally violate anything.
Correct.
No, no penalty or anything, right?
No, no money, no, no, no like this. So, we're all set there.
DEC, so DEC cited us, right?
Correct.
So, we do have, we do have that from DEC. Has that been lifted?
That should be lifted, depending on...
So, in order to lift it, we had to submit an application, and we had to address some field issues. The application was submitted two weeks ago.
Correct.
And he said, send us pictures, that you've addressed the field issues. That was done, I think, in his email that you guys have in front of you, that was sent today, I believe.
Yes, because I was waiting for RC REC to do the job.
Our DEC contact, I think he's out this week, so we expect next week.
Correct.
So we still have the-
That he'll issue a permit.
So-
That's our, our hope and expectation.
So the hope and expectation is to get the, get the permit next week.
Okay.
And then they can resume-
Then they can resume working. And now Arnold Palmer Foundation was supposed to be here at the end of the month, it's the end of the month? What is the status of Arnold?
March, they're supposed to be here in March, I don't know what, where they stand.
I don't know where they stand.
So, I thought we were originally told the end of February, but it's fine, because if they're not knocking on the door, then we still have time to get this done.
Correct.
So we get the stormwater permit finally issued by DEC. Where are you with planning?
Thank you. So, Sean's been working on the site plan application, the environmental assessment form, and the stormwater, wetland, and tree permit packet, as well as a parking plan. They've made some serious headway on the parking plan. It's been crafted and it cites, it fits within the town code, for the special code for the par three golf course. So it has, the town calls for 48 spots in that space, they have a plan for 50 spots, and that's not taking into consideration the parking ride from the state.
Right, the state.
So that'd be another additional 40 spaces.
Okay.
But as far as the, yes.
Do we need any permit from the state for that road to be able to park, or anybody can, it's a public park.
No, it's a public parking.
Okay, it's already a parking ride.
Yes. So if you wanna take a look at those plans, Sean has them for you here.
The, the planning board brought up the question of, you know, the restaurant as well, but I think they were satisfied that you guys are doing the report.
Yes.
For them, they're gonna be doing a party. Because, because you're covered on the course, are you covered on the restaurant? The, the code is a little ambiguous to it, but with the overflow parking on the street, I think that-
That's what you're counting in.
Right.
That's why you brought it up.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Just to make sure.
Overflow parking in the state-owned land that we maintain, right, Dave?
We do, since 1970.
That's right.
And you know what? And why not be able to walk across the street to the mall and park and just walk across the street?
Oh, would you carry a bag?
Crosswalk there, yeah.
Who else, Joe?
Bag drop.
Three clubs there, right?
Well, that's Joe.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
Five iron, maybe four pitching wood.
What else you got on the-
I was gonna say, I need my approach.
So really, that's where, that's where it is, we're on the planning board agenda for the 23rd. We're waiting for some signatures from Larry Nussbaum.
23rd of March?
Of March, of this month, of next month, excuse me. So that's our kind of follow-up, where all of his paperwork needs to be finished and submitted to the planning, and then at that time, I'll come before you guys again on this project and let you know kind of where those permits are, and I may ask you to reprieve some of the cost from those permits from the town. That's all we're permitted to help them with, if we're gonna be good.
I have a question for you.
How much, how much has it been?
Do they have to come before you?
I'd have to look at the, do you have the sheets on you, this packets?
Um, no.
The building maintenance, the restaurant building maintenance, the town, right?
We're like a DJ there.
The maintenance on the building.
Not the packet.
Oh.
It's on them, they're the ones that take care of the base.
Landlords, they, they take it.
I'll get those, too.
Okay, yeah. Just so we know what that figure would be.
Yeah.
It's a few hundred dollars.
Okay. All right.
Sean, you'll be the general manager of the, at least, restaurant.
Of everything over there, whatever we need to do, pretty much.
Yeah, okay.
Questions from the board on where we stand. So just as a recap, we expect DEC to lift their citation and issue the permit next week, hopefully.